Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee on Monday, the 10th of November. Agenda item one is apologies and welcome. Over to you, please, Sam.
Thank you. We've got apologies from Councillors Andy Fry and Mel Fordington.
Thank you very much indeed, and welcome to you all, and thank you so much for your time this morning. Agenda item two, any declarations of interest, any party whip, please. No, great, thank you very much. Agenda item three, public participation, I don't think we have any, do we, Sam?
No, Chair.
Very much. Item four is the confirmation of the minutes. Can I sign these as a true and accurate record, please?
We need to defer them, sorry.
Okay.
They'll be deferred until the next meeting.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. Agenda item five is the Integrated Care Board, and I welcome Simon Trickett, the new Chief Exec of the Integrated Care Board, and old, but he's got an extended role, as we're all aware. It was Herefordshire and Worcestershire, now gone into Coventry and Warwickshire in addition to that. So many congratulations on your new role, Simon. Can I hand over to you, please?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, everybody, for inviting me today. Delighted to be here. Hopefully, the report that your officers have expertly put together with our team provides all of the background that you need. Just to provide some headlines in terms of what's been happening, in terms of how the role of integrated care boards is changing, as is the geography, and I guess that's the main purpose for my presence here today. So that really goes back to a point in March of this year, when, I think it's fair to say that the government had probably got their head around the challenges facing the NHS, and it was at that point they decided they'd like to make some changes, which did then lead into the 10-year plan that appeared later, later this year, in early summer. One of the key things that the government were keen to do was to rebalance the financial performance in the NHS. A key element of rebalancing the financial performance was to reduce management costs and overheads. And there were two main elements to that. Firstly, there's a policy direction that the government planned to abolish NHS England in 2027, and to merge the functions of NHS England into the Department of Health and Social Care. So probably reversing a direction of travel that was set in 2010, when the then coalition government created NHS England and separated it out from the political government decision-making process. We're reversing that, and we're going back into a ministerially-led Department of Health and Social Care, who will be much more responsible for NHS outcomes and performance, which, you know, I make no comment on that, that's the political direction of travel. But secondly, and more relevantly, in March this year, we were told at Integrated Care Boards, we should be planning to reduce our running costs, so the amount of money that we spend on running the organisation by 50% at some point leading into the 26, 27 years. So for much of this financial year, therefore, we have been working through our options as to how we can reduce our running costs, and in conjunction with that, to have a more strategic role as a strategic commissioner, which the paper very articulately explains. So in terms of the mechanics of that, so that was a 50% running cost reduction on average across the country. So the way it worked out then, some point in April, we had more specific local targets. Herefordshire, Worcestershire, and Coventry and Warwickshire actually are quite low spenders compared to other areas. So the actual reduction we have to make across both of those ICBs averages out at about 40%, so a bit less. And there are some ICBs, and I think Gloucestershire is one, where they have a 58% reduction to make. So we are definitely on the right side of that challenge. It's complicated. As the paper explained, we've reviewed a number of options as to how we could deliver that scale of cost reduction. It clearly boils down to scale and economies of scale. Having reviewed the options, the ICBs in the West Midlands decided, there were six integrated care boards in the West Midlands, there still are six integrated care boards, and the proposal that came forward, which was accepted by everybody, including NHS England, was the best option, was that the ICBs clustered together. So a single leadership team, basically, in essence, running two ICBs, and then using the opportunity where you have duplicated roles to reduce the costs. So two chief finance officers will only need one, two chief medical officers will only need one, and that principle applies throughout the organisation. We've worked hard over the summer to start to put those arrangements in place. It clearly isn't something that you can just press a button and happens overnight. Conscious that colleagues are going through a lot of planning for local government reorganisation, and all of that is based on a two- to three-year time period. I suspect we can do it a little bit quicker than that, but it certainly will take the remainder of this financial year, and probably a chunk of the next financial year. So we've appointed a Chair, who is Krishnay Waring, who is now Chair of both Herefordshire/Worcester Integrated Care Board and Coventry and Warwickshire Integrated Care Board. Some of you will know Krishnay has been the Chair of Herefordshire/Worcester ICB for the last three years, and at the end of the summer, they appointed a Chief Executive as well, who was me, who, I took up post on the 1st of September as the Chief Exec of both ICBs. What I've been doing since then is trying to develop an operating model that shows how this arrangement could work, and outlines how we could release the kinds of costs that we're expected to. We are doing that through a management of change process with our staff. That's going to be a staged incremental process, the first stage of which is a new executive and director team structure. There are 36 people in the most senior leadership roles across two ICBs. We are now in a period of consultation with those 36 people about implementing a new structure from the 1st of January, for which there are 19 jobs. So we have 36 people who are going to be competing for 19 jobs, and I would expect to have made appointments to the majority of those roles by somewhere between the middle and the end of January next year, which clearly will be the start of releasing quite a bit of cost. I think there is another missing ingredient to that change process, so there's a lot of, has been a lot of debate since this process started with the government about funding for redundancy costs. So again, if we are going to make people redundant, there clearly is a cost that's incurred in meeting people's terms, contractual terms and conditions when you make them redundant. It's obviously all done on a business case of you pay that redundancy cost, and then you recover a savings by not having to pay those people. It appears there is going to be a national voluntary redundancy scheme for NHS Integrated Care Board, and I'm expecting that will become public knowledge and be announced this week. I don't know for sure, but that seems to be the expectation, and that will clearly form a big part of our change process. Just for the committee's information, we employ, across the two ICBs, there are about 700 staff in total, and probably a third of those are involved in delivering continuing healthcare, which is a key service which interfaces the most with adult and children's social care. So 700 staff, we've got to reduce by about 40%. We've probably delivered about a quarter of that saving already through holding vacancies and recruitment and turnover. I would expect a voluntary redundancy scheme, we've asked people to express interest earlier this summer, if we were to run a voluntary redundancy scheme, how many people would be interested? There were 110 people across the two ICBs that would be interested. My anticipation is, if the details are confirmed, it may be an even higher number who actually apply for voluntary redundancy. And you can therefore see by the maths, there will be some compulsory redundancies as a result of this process, but clearly we are trying to minimise that, as well as seeking opportunities to redeploy people elsewhere in NHS roles, either in trusts or in other parts of the NHS, to try and retain as much capacity and expertise as we can, but clearly to try and mitigate the redundancy cost bill and the cost of transition as well. Another couple of points, which I think are relevant, so we aren't planning, as things stand, to merge the two ICBs. We will keep two statutory bodies, there will be a single board and a single leadership team who will act on behalf of both ICBs. Committee members may remember, we had a similar few years, 2017-ish to 2020, where the three Worcestershire CCGs at the time were run on a similar basis. So we kept the three CCGs, but we had one board and one team who acted as the board for all three. That is our plan for the next probably three to four years, mainly because we need to wait for the local government reorganisation to play through. So I'm aware of the debates that colleagues are having about one unitary or two unitary council. That's important, but probably more important to us is the next stage of the reform process, and whichever organisations emerge from reform, choosing strategic mayoral authority partners. And it's pretty clear, I think, from government policy, they would like integrated care board footprints to align with strategic mayoral authority footprints. So you see, we have a bit of a holding pattern to have until the local authorities have sorted that out. Nobody knows, do they, even people in this room, which way that will play out. I'm aware of the documentation that talks of partnerships with Herefordshire, it talks of opportunities with Warwickshire, it talks of opportunities with Gloucestershire, it talks of opportunities with Shropshire and Telford as well, and who knows which way that will play out. We'll see how that goes, and when there is a firm decision on that, and when the strategic mayoral authority is starting to be established, we can look again at the footprints of the integrated care boards and how we might realign, which is important. I think the only other point is, clearly, it's an obvious question, well, how are you going to do the same job with 50 to 40% less resources? I think that's something we are working through. In terms of the operating model, the policy response is, well, the job won't be the same. They want us to be more strategic, they want there to be a greater role for local providers to take a bit more accountability. You will know from this committee, lots of issues will come before you, and you will have somebody from the Integrated Care Board who kind of acts as a facilitator and an enabler. We'll probably have a little bit less capacity for that, and we'll need the trust to provide a bit more local leadership. And secondly, you'll be aware of the development of neighbourhood health, which is probably the big part and the most interesting and exciting part of the government's 10-year plan. That's something we'll take really seriously in Worcestershire. It's a huge opportunity. I remain convinced that the strongest part of our health and care system and offer is our neighbourhoods, our primary care networks, our community service offer, our integration with local public health and social care teams. We'll be putting a lot of emphasis in the new model that emerges on getting the most out of neighbourhood health. It's a big role, actually, for the health and wellbeing boards locally to oversee that, and I'm sure scrutiny committee will play a part in that. So the ICB being more strategic will form part of the next few years. Local providers having to take a little bit more ownership and accountability will form part of the next few years, as will the development of neighbourhood health as well. So if it's okay, Chair, I'll probably stop there, but very happy to answer any questions about the paper or anything else I've said.
Thank you very much indeed, Simon, for taking us through the papers and covering off where we are currently. Members of the committee, questions, please, starting with you, councillor Wells.
Chair, good morning, everyone, and thank you, Simon, for your report. Two questions, if I may. What is the optimum size, then, of an integrated care board? Is it what we've got now, or is it what we had before, or is it something that we should be looking for in future? So what is the optimum size, and have we reached it? And secondly, how will the changes, and particularly the redundancies and reduction in staff costs, impact on patient experience? Is there a potential for reduced quality of service? Thank you.
Two very good questions, councillor Wells. So in terms of the first one, I mean, my only hesitancy is, what is the optimum size of an integrated care board? Probably depends on where you sit and your experience. Councillor Wells will know, because he's sat in political circles for much of the last 20 years, as have I, and we often go on a cycle, don't we, where the pervading view is that smaller is better, because it's more local. And then the next part of the cycle, undoubtedly, is you need to have a bigger and more economies of scale. It's very clear that the government policy is the economies of scale and strategic oversight, and some of the financial benefits from having a larger budget and the ability to manage some of the risk across a larger area is more important. So current policy says ICB should cover at least 1.5 million people, not dissimilar to the current policy on strategic mayoral authorities. So our new ICB cluster covers just over 1.8 million, so we're actually on the slightly large size, although there are some integrated care boards. The biggest one is Greater Manchester, I think, that covers nearly 4 million or 5 million people. So we are definitely at optimum size, and probably slightly above that, if anything. The combined budget of the two integrated care boards this year is nearly £6 billion, so clearly that does allow a lot greater ability to manage financial risk in some of the big, more volatile areas, particularly around continuing healthcare, which I mentioned, medicine spend can be very volatile and very dependent on market conditions and tariffs, actually, from people in, across the other side of the Atlantic. So the ability to manage at scale feels quite important at the moment. So I'm confident we've got the right configuration that matches current policy. I offer no comment on whether big really is better or small really is better, because I've worked in both, and I think it depends on the quality of the people that we get, the quality of leadership, and the quality of local relationships. I think you can make any configuration work, actually, if you've got the right relationships and the right people and the right focus. In terms of patient experience, again, a really good question. So the current policy would be that the, it'll be circa £15 million of management costs that gets reduced as a result of this 40% reduction. All of that will be reinvested into the programme budget that's available to commission more services, more care, more activity that should hopefully reduce waiting lists. So you can definitely see the logic and the argument, that this is really good for patients, because it will allow more money to be available for frontline services, less money on administration, more money for frontline services, that's a good thing. Clearly, we have a delicate balance to strike, because we are accountable to the public and responsible to the public, and certainly when it comes to information that we're able to offer, signposting and issues that people have with navigating services, one of my priorities is obviously to make sure we're protecting those public and community interfaces as much as we can through these changes. So the aim is very much that we improve patient experience through this process.
Thank you very much, Simon. Councillor Wells, did you want to come back with...
Just a quick one, Chair, if I may, thanking Simon for his answer. I think I heard you say in that answer that you probably thought that this new configuration was probably a bit too large. I think you were saying that, maybe you want to reconstruct that sentence, that would be helpful. And I guess the question is, if it's all about economies of scale, why don't we just have an England one? You know, at which point, I'm trying to get, Simon, to which point you believe personally that we've reached the zenith, the best configuration that provides the economies of scale but still keeps the local focus. And with all these savings, why haven't you been doing this already?
So, yeah, I didn't mean to say it was too big. I think it is now above average. I think we have an added complication of, we are now working with Coventry, which is part of the West Midlands Combined Authority. So it does feel a bit like, I was saying to councillor May and to the two colleagues from the Cabinet earlier, Warwickshire feels there's a lot of similarities between Warwickshire and Worcestershire, echoed actually in their local government reform debate, that's exactly the same, and there are two very clear arguments for two different options, just as though there are in Worcestershire. So I don't think we're too big. I think this is, in terms of my personal opinion, we definitely have the optimum configuration for current government policy. Absolutely, we've got, this was the best solution by a mile for Herefordshire and Worcestershire, and for Worcestershire, definitely. I, clearly, you, the right balance we're always looking to strike is to get economies of scale that's supported by really good local devolution delegation. And I think we can definitely build an operating model and a way of working that creates an optimum scenario in terms of that. So yes, I am very confident for the next three or four years, we can strike that right balance. I think it will be an interesting conversation once a strategic mayoral authority is confirmed. I think it's an interesting political conundrum for an elected mayor as to whether they would ask for some of the integrated care board powers, responsibilities and resources to be part of a devolution deal. I'd expect that to be part of the debate over the next few years. But we definitely, for this next period, we have the optimum configuration, and we can make that work.
Thank you, Simon. Councillor Oudle, please.
Yeah, I've become to think that, a bit like local government, strategic health management needs to have reform every 10 years, whether it needs it or not. And it seems to be the case that we're in that cycle again. I remember the regional health authorities, and I think basically we are recreating them in a different name. Bluntly, I've got two questions. Why do we need you? What is the point of the Integrated Care Board? Could it be done differently, much differently? And the other issue of concern I have is the democratic deficit, which exists. Public awareness of you is incredibly low. People don't even know you exist. How do we improve on that, so they can actually value what the work you do, and actually want to actually save and protect you from potential reform which isn't needed?
I mean, I would never want the public to want to save and protect me, because that's, I'm a public servant. I know, I know what you mean. And look, fair challenge as well. I think the NHS, I started in the NHS in 2008. I remember somebody telling me my first day, the only thing that is constant, Simon, is that it's always changing. And I think, to be honest, there has never been a true word spoken. I've worked, therefore, done 17 years in the NHS, I've probably been through five or even six reorganisations. I think, councillor Oudle, 10 years is probably optimistic. I think it's more like four or five, if I'm honest. It feels like every four or five years, we're having some reform. You know, because it's quite political, every government has a view on how it will handle the demands the NHS places politically, in terms of the electorate and its expectations of government, but probably also financially, in terms of the Treasury and the role, the NHS is the biggest public spending budget. I think welfare is getting there to equal it, but it's a big part of taxation policy, is how much money you can create for the NHS. It will always be very political. I think the ongoing political nature of it will always mean somebody has a better idea of how it could be reorganised. I mean, I think in terms of the people in the street, I don't think it's important that they recognise who the Integrated Care Board is. My aim has never been, in the leadership roles I've had in these various organisations, has never been to have a particularly high public profile. I think the public need to know how to access services, the public need to hold us to account, absolutely. You need to hold us to account through local government scrutiny. We need to be part of a health and wellbeing board that's setting optimistic strategy for better health outcomes. But actually, whether we're called an integrated care board, a clinical commissioning group, a primary care trust, a primary care group, a regional health authority, actually, the job fundamentally is pretty similar, that somebody has to have ownership and accountability for the government, the resources the government allocates to meet health needs of people in Worcestershire. Somebody has to have accountability and responsibility for organising local services and allocating those resources. And that, in essence, is the job of all those organisations I've just listed. They're called different things, but in essence, they are receiving the budget on the 1st of April, and they are charged with putting contracts in place and allocating resources for services that meet health need. I am accountable personally for that, I'm an accountable officer, I'm accountable to the Secretary of State, and I'm accountable to the people of Worcestershire as well in that sense. And I take that accountability very seriously, but I always think you would need somebody to do that. I mean, councillor Wells said, well, why don't we have an England integrated care board? Well, similarly, the government could just do this centrally from Whitehall, wouldn't they? But we all know that it's very different living in Worcestershire than it is in the middle of London, or in the middle of rural Cumbria. The beauty of England is the very different communities that we, that make up our country. And certainly in terms of the NHS, you look at different health outcomes, different inequalities, different priorities, different deprivation, different rurality. There will always be a place for local ownership of how best to meet that. So I think there's a strong argument that we need the right local focus on this. There wasn't another point, wasn't there, democratic deficit. So again, since I started in the NHS, because my background is local government, as many of you know, and I can see the arguments as to why... government, as many of you know, and I can see the arguments as to why there isn't more local democratic accountability. And we've tried various different routes of resolving that, haven't we? We've had councillors who've sat on the boards of various organisations. We've had health and wellbeing boards. We have scrutiny committees. We actually have, Paul Robinson is a voting member of the integrated care board as things stand. So local government, and Paul Walker from Herfordshire Council is the same. So I think the next iteration of democratic accountability in the NHS is definitely going to revolve around mayor authorities and elected mayors. So the view is that where there is an elected mayor, the expectation is they are a voting member of the integrated care board. So you can see the direction of travel this is going in. I just think, from a political point of view, there's a fine balance to strike, isn't there, between making sure that you have the right level of political influence over a service provision locally, which is part of a national health service. So there's probably eighty percent of the job I'm asked to do is determined by national policy. This is what we want, Simon. It needs to be this colour. It needs to be that big. You need to do it on a Wednesday. And that's how many you need. And that's just part of a national health service. There's a national GP contract, for instance, which is the same for every GP practice in the country. There is always local variance, which enables us to target effort, resources, endeavours in particular areas that are particularly relevant to our population. But there is that big majority which is nationally directed. I think the dilemma for local politicians will always be, well, how do I balance my democratic oversight of something that is so centrally controlled by government as well? And we've got to strike that right balance. But the debate will continue for sure about democratic accountability in the NHS because it always has been.
Thank you, Simon. Before I come to councillor Price, councillor Bell, Rose to hand to the cabinet member. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Simon, for this presentation. I have two questions. Questions come in pairs. So the first is, how is it going to look like for a common person or resident when we talk about waiting times? There is a clear disjoint between primary care and acute trust, and that has, of course, increased after pandemic. So primary care contracts you've mentioned about, and you know, we are nowhere near addressing that. I mean, recent guidance is obviously, you know, the primary care can't send the patients to 111. If the patient needs an appointment, you should offer them an appointment. But that's not happening. Patients are being sent to acute trusts where they end up waiting for hours. And then there's nothing done there and they are asked to go back to their GP and they can't get to their GP. So that circle is going on. So with all this, which we, almost looks like a management exercise, how it is going to look like for someone living in Worcestershire? Of course, we are going to get, you know, the pot of Warwickshire now and from service point of view. Is it going to get better from the waiting list time? People are waiting on the surgeries, appointments and waiting times in the acute trust. And accountability, you've mentioned about acute trust to have some accountability, which I assume is possibly the management side of it. But what about primary care side? You know, so things are, the contract out of hours, we're still having the same issue. And the issue is not going to be sorted until unless this whole out of hours issue is sorted out. People can't get any medical care out of hours, bank holidays, Saturday and Sundays. It's not their fault. It's the system which then they end up in the hospital because they have nowhere else to go. So how is this going to look like for a common person with this merger and especially people living on bordering areas? Are they still going to be in Worcestershire or they can go to a Warwick hospital or they will go to Covent Warwick? They will travel all round? So how is it going to really change?
Okay, I mean, I don't-
Sorry, there are a few parts to it.
It's all right. There's several parts. I tried to write down as many as I could. But you'll have to let me know if I forget any. So firstly, I know from talking to Tom earlier, you've got on your forward plan, GP access for January, haven't you? I don't want to replicate that debate. I think GP access is complicated. One of the things I'm sure you will want to look at in January is there is a new element of the national GP contract which came into force on the first of October, which is about GPs having to keep their online consultation portals open for the whole of the working day. They used to shut them in kind of mid-afternoon and then spend the rest of the afternoon working through the requests that have come through. They have to now keep that portal open all day. Credit to Worcestershire, they are a hundred percent compliant with that. I know, for instance, in Coventry and Warwickshire, compliance is about forty five percent. Got a lot of work to do. So there are national GP contract changes which will tackle some of the issues councillor Bell raises. Are waiting list times going to get better? Yes, I'm confident. They've got a lot better in the last twelve to eighteen months. We are being set some very ambitious targets for the next twelve to eighteen months as well. And I will be held to account for, and the hospital leadership will be held to account for delivering some of those. I'm really confident from a commissioning point of view, we are buying, funding, allocating enough resources to, at a specialty level, to hit those reduced waiting times for elective care. And I think we're right on track to where we need to be. Clearly, we are going to remain in a post-pandemic reducing the backlog, doing the day job at the same time as chipping away at a backlog of care that built up. That's the case right across the country. But in Worcestershire, our waiting times are progressing well. And again, I suspect that might be something the Health Scrutiny Committee might want to look at in the coming months as well as to where we are against that. In terms of how will it look for patients, there are no changes to any of the pathways as a result of this. This is an administrative change designed to free up a chunk of money that can be reinvested into frontline services. The members of the public shouldn't really notice any difference whatsoever in the services they access. We're not changing any contracts. We're not changing any budgets. As a result of this, the services, the pathways will remain as they are. If you are a patient registered with a Worcester GP practice, for instance, you will continue to be able to access the Worcestershire out of hours contract. That contract actually is currently at the latter stages of reprocurement. We are, I think the ICB board has a decision to take next Wednesday about placing a contract for a new GP out of hours contract. There is care available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for general practice conditions. Clearly, out of hours, it is for the most urgent, the most serious conditions. People will often be told, well, actually, that's not urgent. You need to wait until your GP practice opens in the morning and you need to make contact with them there. But again, I don't want to rerun the debate you're going to have in January about all of that, which I think is fair. So hopefully, that's covered all of the questions that you asked, councillor Bell.
Thank you very much. councillor Price, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I start by thanking Simon for joining us today? We recognise the significant pressures you're working under, both nationally and locally, and the amount of reform that's been implemented at pace. Simon, I have two questions today. Given the new cluster model with Coventry and Warwickshire, how will you ensure Worcestershire retains a clear and independent voice in decision-making and priority setting? And additionally, the national blueprint talks about doing things once centrally, at scale and locally where it matters. Who decides which functions stay local and which are centralised? And what happens if Worcestershire disagrees?
Yep, good questions. Couple of things. So how will I retain a Worcestershire focus? So within the structure that I just talked to you about, so thirty-six people, nineteen jobs, one of the nineteen jobs is somebody that will lead on Herfordshire and Worcestershire delivery. So somebody that will be embedded, focused, their whole job will be about how we are leading locally and to make sure there is a Worcestershire flavour to that voice. Similarly, one of the other jobs we're going to create, I'm going to have, there'll be a deputy chief, somebody who is an executive director but will also have an add-on to their job to be a deputy chief executive for Herfordshire and Worcestershire, somebody else who will, again, have a big focus of their working week on making sure that we are most keenly attuned to the needs of Worcestershire people and making sure that we are managing our relationships well in Worcestershire. Clearly, I've got a role to play in that, but we will, there is a backup plan for that, if you like, as well. So I'm pretty confident that, along with the things that I mentioned around the development of neighbourhood health, around potentially a bit more delegation and devolution to some of the trusts to take some leadership in some of these areas, there's a lot of local focus. This only works, economies of scale for some of the big stuff, but it only works if you get the right level of delegation and devolution. Again, I would draw parallels to the debate you're all having about unitary councils. Unitary councils won't work if they sit in a big ivory tower somewhere miles from everywhere. Unitary councils in either of the models will only work if you have the right level of local neighbourhood, parish, town influence and accountability for those very local needs, for those communities. I think the operating model and determining what happens best at each level, that's going to need to be a conversation over the course of the next year or two while we work through the detail of that. There will be differing opinions. There always will be. I think, I would hope that this committee, I would hope that the health and wellbeing board both played a role in helping to review some of those debates and discussions, helping to input some local views. We will always look to find consensus. I think that's why, I think that's why I'm still here, to be honest, because we've found an ability over the last ten years to find consensus through some pretty difficult conversations around health and care services. So we'll be looking to use those relationships for this next period of change to get the right, most pragmatic, most sensible and consensus decision. That will always be where we start. So I'd hope we can do that. Clearly, you know, you are well within your rights to scrutinise me and hold me to account as that process goes through.
That's really helpful. Thank you. And thank you for the examples given. Just one follow-up question. Is there any risk that Worcestershire could effectively subsidise higher cost systems elsewhere in the cluster?
There's a big debate about that and I have a lot of challenge from that in Coventry and Warwickshire in particular. So Worcestershire typically has been a deficit system. So we've spent more money than we have been allocated, particularly in our hospital sector. One of the benefits of working at scale is the ability to move resources around and manage risk. Fundamentally, though, the way the allocation formulae work, we'll still have a pretty clear idea what the Worcestershire budget, what the Herfordshire budget, what the Coventry budget and the Warwickshire budget will be. The starting principle will be to live within those resources in each of those areas. And as we found with Herfordshire, there always are opportunities for more partnership working, more sharing, more cooperation and collaboration. We should explore those, where they work for patients and where there are economies and efficiencies through that. So it isn't as black and white as the Worcestershire budget will be the Worcestershire budget and we will not deviate from that. We'll use flexibility, but there is not going to be any large-scale subsidy at all because that's not the way the health service works actually. All of this is largely dictated by national contracting methodologies and frameworks in terms of resource allocation.
Thank you very much. Can I just come back on one of those points? Are we not at risk, and I'm sorry to ask this, of dilution, risk of diluting our outcomes by taking this approach?
Hopefully not, because what we want is good outcomes for the whole population. I want good outcomes for everybody in each of those four upper-tier council areas. That's my job to get the best outcomes, to get the least inequalities, the least differences in outcomes. That's my job. There always is, a very hyper-local approach does allow for a very hyper-local focus on outcomes. I still think through neighbourhood health, we need that at community level. So councillor May, you're a leader of Bromsgrove District Council, you're going to want to see what does this mean for Bromsgrove, for Bromsgrove residents. And the best way of describing that is that very neighbourhood focus at Bromsgrove level. And I think our operating model will be able to give you that. I think, I mean, some of councillor Bell's challenge around waiting times, well, actually, waiting times should be the same no matter where you live. We don't really want a postcode lottery for waiting times. If you're waiting in A and E to be seen, if you're waiting for a hip or knee replacement, if you're waiting for a cataract operation, those waiting times actually should be the same no matter where you live in each of the four areas. And actually, they're not today. There is a little bit of standardisation that we need to do to level people up to those, the best waiting times for those areas. So we need to find the right balance between very neighbourhood, very locally reflective of need and some of the big nationally political priorities around how long do you wait in A and E, how quickly do you hand over an ambulance, how long do you wait for your cataract, knee, hip, whatever procedure, those ones where we need to get more standardisation and level people up for sure.
Thanks, Simon. Just one quick question. I'll come to you in one moment, Chris. councillor Sweeney and councillor Wild, you're already on the list, so I'm coming to you. In terms of prevention, where does this sit in your future vision for the integrated care board, please?
Yeah, prevention remains a top priority. I mean, I would argue for all of us involved in public service, we've got to take the prevention agenda much more seriously, haven't we? Because we can't just keep meeting need that emerges. There is a whole load of work that we've got to do together to try and prevent future demands on public services. I think that definitely applies to the NHS, but I'm sure it applies to local government. It certainly applies in social care for children's and adults, doesn't it? We have got to get much better at prevention. And I think, I mean, there's a lot of interesting political debates around the importance of prevention. I can kind of park all that. I think the strongest argument for prevention is an economic one, that you need to intervene early when people's needs are developing as a way of avoiding future costs. So, you know, the work we're doing on obesity, on children's health, the work that we're doing on helping people retain their independence and living at home independently for as long as possible. There are a whole load of moral arguments for those which are really sound. I think the strongest argument is an economic argument, that you need to do that work to avoid the long-term care costs that will result if you don't tackle that properly. And that's what we should all be focused on, is whatever your political views on prevention, the economic view, I think, is absolutely overwhelming.
Thanks very much, Simon. councillor Wild and then councillor McSweeney, please.
Thank you, Simon. I wasn't going to actually speak on this, but you said something, first of all, you said, nobody really knows what the integrated care board is. And I think that's definitely true. But you do notice at local level if things aren't working out properly for you. You said that the public shouldn't notice any difference with these changes. But then earlier on, you mentioned that there should be improvement. So just to give an example, you said, and you quoted it, signposting, it's very, very hard to navigate around the system at the moment. And you said that signposting would improve. How will you be doing that? And how would all these changes benefit that?
Yeah, I think we have to separate out. So am I going to improve signposting as a specific result of these changes? Well, no, to be honest, the two issues aren't linked. Do I need to improve signposting for health and care services generally? And would I have been doing that anyway irrespective of what the national policy and how many integrated care boards there were going to be? Well, absolutely. So we definitely need to improve signposting. I think there are a whole number of ways that that needs to be delivered. Sometimes it's about when people are accessing the NHS, about how we make that as clear as possible. We've done a lot of work on single points of access, for instance, that try to avoid the need for hospital admissions. So some very practical operational things. Clearly, a lot of it's about public awareness and information and social media and websites and all of that other stuff. I think a lot of it is about working with local government and local ward councillors. The most effective signposting often comes from really strong ward-based community leadership that you guys bring and you talk to your communities, you talk on the doorsteps. We equip you with the information to educate communities as to how best to navigate the NHS system. I don't think any of those elements are a golden bullet that makes that all okay. I think what we need is a combination of all of them. But again, you know, that might be something that features on the future forward plan, that you look at how we are signposting people, how we are supporting people to navigate. But let me be clear, improved signposting and helping people navigate isn't a direct consequence of these administrative changes. The two aren't really linked, other than maybe we'll have a bit more resources for frontline care that might support some navigation. But the two are different issues.
Thank you very much, Simon. councillor McSweeney, please. Councillor McSweeney, please.
Yeah, it was only because you've mentioned it. You mentioned the role of ward councillors, and this is exactly why I'm asking, because I'm often called in to people who are in crisis, and the number one observation between the carers and the patients is they have no idea who to turn to, and that's even when they've seen their GPs. And it's, the biggest quote I get from people who I've helped in desperate situations, but councillors can't go to every home and do that job, is how did you know all this stuff? And that is still happening, you know, even a few weeks ago, I called in on someone. So it is, we're not expected to know everything at patients, as patients, but there are key people who will come across people in their lives and they can at least start the ball rolling and be a one-stop shop, not have to keep repeating it everywhere you can turn to.
Thank you very much. My apologies, I jumped straight to councillor McSweeney.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Simon, for coming and helping to keep us informed. I'm going to go back out from sort of the detail to the big structural thing. I mean, it's, I know you mentioned this and it's kind of been covered a bit, my colleagues on the right talked about sort of that regular restructuring, but when we go to the mayoral system and the restructuring, I was going to ask about, okay, do we have an idea of the costs of that and also sort of kind of the organisational things in terms of, okay, so you've got to restructure again, sort of how the organisation works. I mean, it's a very general question, I'm not sure I've asked anything specific, but I'm just after more details of that process.
Yeah, look, I can't answer what a strategic mayoral authority will cost. What I can say, which may be helpful, the government have set a new benchmark of, they expect us to spend no more than nineteen pounds per head of population on management costs for the Integrated Care Board, and that includes like the direct management, the contracting oversight, it includes continuing healthcare operation and includes management of the medicines, commissioning medicines optimisation frameworks, which again, typically we have employed pharmacists who do some of that medicines oversight as well. But nineteen pounds per head is now the target. I would expect us to reach that target at some point in twenty six, twenty seven. The only reason I can't give a firm date is because I don't quite know how the redundancy and exit costs are going to be funded. But as I said, I think that might be pretty imminent. But in this structure that we're talking about today, and in a structure that would emerge in the next chapter that was aligned to the strategic mayoral authorities, I can't see the nineteen pounds per head changing. It might go down, it definitely isn't going to go up. So the administrative costs would be based on the budget, which is broadly in that sense. Just to put it into context, the two current ICBs spent between, I think it was between twenty nine pounds eighty and thirty two pounds something or other, so we're getting from those figures down to nineteen pounds with a bit of inflation adjustment as well, which equates for the forty percent reduction.
Thank you very much, Simon. Last question from councillor Ecock, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions. Right, the first one is, you mentioned forty percent redundancies, this seems to be an awful lot of staff. What are the main areas these cuts will affect? Will it be more job sharing, moving stuff into other areas? You also mentioned clusters. What risk to our services are we talking about, especially adult social care? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the forty percent reduction applies to all staff, and I think the simplest way of looking at it is, you've currently got two teams of people running two integrated care boards, you're going to have as a result of this process, one team of people that are going to have to run both. So where we have duplicates, they will compete for the job or maybe one job's vacant, maybe one person takes voluntary redundancy, and we end up with one person. So fundamentally, the structure, the capacity, the experience needed to fulfil those roles is the same as it has been, but we just have one person who has to work across a wider area. Again, there are parallels to some of the local government reorganisation debates, that you have a number of people that fulfil roles in different organisations, and in essence, you'll end up with some, a post who will be responsible across a broader area. Clustering impact on adult social care, I think it's a good question, that we, we're not planning any impact at all on adult social care, it's really important, the relationships that we have built up with adult social care, the two are totally dependent upon each other, aren't they? NHS services and all social care actually are totally interdependent, and I think we would look to develop that. We clearly have Better Care Fund resources of, I think it's sixty something million pounds in Worcestershire this year, which we jointly commit and spend with adult social care, we'll be looking to protect all those arrangements. So none of what I'm talking about should impact on any of that, but clearly, those arrangements will evolve just like everything else we're doing over time as well.
Thank you very much, Simon. Councillor Cummins indicated he'd like to ask a question, he hasn't spoken yet, so I'd like to indulge him.
Thank you, Simon. I've been through these changes in NHS for the last forty years. So a couple of questions here for you. Primary care access and sustainability, councillor Bell has already talked about it, but my question is, a lot of changes are going to occur, how will you measure these initiatives which you are going to take will be effective? Just like what you've said, out of ours, I came to you two years ago about our surgery in Bromsgrove, so similarly, out of ours in various places, because we've sat here through, and when we say the patient, the primary care acute trust says, too many people are coming to our emergency ward, but the GP surgeries are closed. So how will you really find a success with the implementation of your new pathways you're going to introduce? That's my first question, a short one, the next one, Karen. Partnership working, you talked about partnership working. We've got Simon here as well from
Healthwatch.
Healthwatch. You talked about working in partnership. Well, there's so many things, again, as Christina said and as Nick said, there is a disjointed service. You can't be there all the time, everywhere. So how would you integrate working with the voluntary sectors to make sure that the healthcare works efficiently for not only patients but the carers? Because it's a long-term strategy to think about. Thanks, Simon.
Okay, two good questions. Again, in terms of primary care access, I don't want to repeat the debate you're going to have in January. All I would say is, the things we've referred to today are all national initiatives about improving primary care access. They also have clear milestones, trajectories and benchmarks that will judge the success or not. You will discuss this when you meet in January, but the most recent GP patient survey, Everton Worcester patients were the most satisfied with their experience of general practice in the country out of all forty-two ICBs. There's a whole discussion around the variability of that, there's a whole discussion around interfaces with A and E that you, that we've talked about, but again, I don't want to repeat that debate. This is, the paper is about the administrative changes, not the pathway changes. Partnership working, I think, is a really good point. So certainly, we've built up strong partnerships and relationships. Simon and I talk on the phone most weeks, sometimes several times a week, we'll be looking to continue those relationships. Clearly, and again, another topic the committee might want to look into, there is a proposal that Healthwatch's won't exist beyond twenty twenty seven either, which we're concerned about that, about protecting the patient voice in the commissioning process, will want to work with Simon and colleagues to make sure we, we develop alternatives if that policy does come through. And finally, on your point around voluntary sector, I think that's a really good one. I think my observation is, we've probably made mistakes over the years in trying to group the voluntary sector together as one thing, certainly across Worcestershire. What the voluntary sector is, a collection of thousands of different organisations that are very local, and the voluntary sector in Pershore is very different from the voluntary sector in Redditch or Bromsgrove. And I think we've got to be much cuter and much more nuanced around how we manage those interfaces. I think the focus on neighbourhood health should allow for that. So if you're developing, if we're developing neighbourhood health offers in Bromsgrove, the relationship between the GP practices in Bromsgrove, the community services, the social care teams in Bromsgrove, and the local voluntary sector organisations in Bromsgrove, which are different to anywhere else, the ability for us to knit that together is really important, and that's a, it's a big part of the discussions we're going to have, I suspect, with health and wellbeing boards over the next year or two, is just how we do that. But I think there's a real opportunity in being more locally focused, because it hasn't worked, has it, trying to do this at Worcestershire level? We've got to be more local, I think.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to bring in Simon Adams, but councillor Miller, who's not on the board but has come along this morning, can he ask a quick question? He's just, so, and then I'll come to you, Mr Adams.
Thank you, Karen. Whether it will be quick or not, I'll do my best. Thank you, Simon. With looking at the social care package, how's Worcestershire local care partnership ensuring timely diagnosis and access to specialist care for communities and support individuals living with Parkinson's and dementia, especially when you're talking about the reductions?
That's the next item, councillor Miller.
Is that the next item?
Yes, it is.
I thought we was on social care.
No, no, no. That's the next item, so if we can just hold that thought till we get to the next agenda item, I'd be most grateful, we'll get that question answered.
I will do indeed.
Thank you very much. Simon Adams is here as the chairman of Healthwatch. Good morning, Simon. Do you want to add to the conversation at all, please?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Simon. Haven't rung you today yet, have we? I think it's two, I mean, there's certainly two issues I can agree with Simon on. The first is that patients don't have an eye or a care to who is actually providing their service within the NHS. And if that provides an opportunity for savings, take advantage of it. Patients don't worry about whether they look at the acute trust website, the Health and Care Trust website or the ICB website. They don't mind who sends them their letters, as long as those letters arrive. So please, those people in the room who can action on that, take advantage of that if you've got to make savings, rather than making savings that take clinical care away from patients and perhaps make waiting times even longer. The second thing I can agree with obviously is, and this is not a plea for Healthwatch, but it is about the independence of the patient voice and collecting those experiences that patients simply won't share with the NHS. And I'll give you a good example of that. We have just done some work with the Health and Care Trust in talking to patients who have been through their talking therapy service, and the experiences that we have been, had reported to us, which we recently published, are very different and almost diametrically opposed, they tell us, to the ones that the patients report to them through friends and family and what have you, and their surveys. So it's kind of identified, there is an ambivalence out there from people who, if they don't get a service that is actually perhaps very good, they don't always feedback, unless of course, they're in that proportion that might want to make a complaint, and not many people do want to make a complaint. So those are two things. In terms of advice and information, picking up on councillor Wild, yeah, Wild, Christine, that point, then please refer your patients, if you, sorry, your constituents, if they've got a question, and there is one councillor in the room who regularly refers constituents to us, thank you, Richard. Right, please refer them to us, because over the last ten years, we probably have learnt more about the NHS and how it operates for patients than some of the people who work in the NHS themselves, and particularly looking across a number of pathways. And one thing I think we probably know more about than the NHS seems to want to talk about is the right to choose, as an example of perhaps some of the questions about where people might be able to get the treatment they want. I have to say, when we talk about right to choose, patients don't seem to mind travelling outside of Worcestershire to get treatment if that's where treatment can be provided in a more timely way.
Thank you very much indeed, Simon. Simon Trickett, do you want to come back on any of that? All I can say is, I think Healthwatch has done a really good job, and Worcestershire's outcomes have been improved by the presence of Healthwatch, and I do think we should work with partners going forward if we do get to twenty twenty seven and Healthwatch is removed from the conversation, how we articulate that conversation. Thank you very much indeed. Simon, thank you for your attendance this morning and your honesty in answering the questions. We recognise the challenges that you personally have and the rest of the Integrated Care Board, and we'd welcome a twelve-month update on this matter, I think. On the work programme, we're going to put about the waiting list times in Worcestershire and signposting guys around the NHS, working your way around the challenges and the patient voice as we've just outlined. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Chair. Let's hope I'm here in twelve months to come and give you an update.
I very much hope so, thank you. Thank you. We'll just have a changeover now with our next team that have kindly come along to talk about the neurological condition pathways. Good morning. Thank you so much for coming along this morning to talk to the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee. I think I'm handing over to you, aren't I, Jade, Jade Brooks? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, committee. We are here today representing the true NHS, so a true partnership endeavour, so I have colleagues here from the specialised services that we're going to talk about in the paper, from Herefordshire and Worcestershire Health and Care Trust and Worcestershire Acute Hospitals Trust as well, and myself from the Integrated Care Board, that Mr Trickett, my boss, has just left. So I'm going to start with a bit of an introduction to the paper, and then we will be delighted to answer questions that the committee have. So with regard to neurological conditions, and we're here today to talk about Parkinson's and dementia care, I think it's probably a fair starting point to say that everyone in this room, or someone you know, has been touched by both dementia care and Parkinson's. Regarding our population, it is one of, or two of the long-term conditions that is impacting your residents, your constituents. In the paper, with regard to Worcestershire, it outlines the number of people that live with those conditions. So known to health services as approximately one thousand three hundred people living with Parkinson's, and with regard to dementia, it's estimated there's over nine thousand people living with that condition. Particularly with dementia care, many people live with the symptoms or signs of dementia and do not come forward for a diagnosis, and I'm sure we'll return to that theme later on. Within the paper, we have focused on giving you a description of how our services are configured in the county and how they work together. They work together not only on the diagnosis, but also on the ongoing support for the person and their family. We acknowledge the role of the voluntary and community sector, so the theme that you picked out in the previous item, as being super critical to making sure that people maximise their independence. This is both supporting people that are newly diagnosed, but also keeping them fit, active and connected within their communities. And I think both Parkinson's and dementia are really good areas if you want to know what good looks like in the voluntary and community sectors. And then also that the paper, as well as giving that overall view of our configuration And then also that the paper, as well as giving that overall view of our configuration of services, it also indicates our look to the future. Our experts, for example, in neurology, are engaging in a national programme called a Pathfinder, where they are helping national policy help shape those standards that we expect of neurological care. That's really fantastic, and all credit to our local teams for doing that engagement. They're one of 10 areas contributing to that work. So we're very proud of being able to share our experiences of high-quality care. In the area of dementia care, we recognise some of the issues we have locally, particularly people tell us, when they come forward for their diagnosis, they feel like a lightbulb moment has occurred, and they get to understand what the diagnosis means for them, and particularly their family. But unfortunately, they also feel they approach a cliff edge with regard to the lack of support once you've become diagnosed. I'm really proud to sit here and say, well, we're going to address that. So we currently have a procurement underway where we will be enhancing post-diagnostic support. Over three years, that looks like something around about £2.5 million will go in, in terms of investing into post-dementia care. But I guess one of the challenges for us in Worcestershire, and indeed across the NHS, across England, as more people develop long-term conditions, we will have a tougher job of ensuring that we have the right capacity to continue to provide high-quality care. It will be a challenge. However, in our joint work together, we will make sure that we have informed staff across health and care, we will continue to support carers, and we will develop personalised care for patients. That's our aspiration. As I say, we've got colleagues, and they will introduce themselves in a moment, and then we're really happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much indeed. I can't see any hands at the moment, so perhaps just a brief discussion with you, with each of you, Jules, Julie, Claire and Jane, about what you do, how you fit into the system, would be good. Now, we note the comment about Parkinson's and dementia, but actually, it was an overview of common neurological conditions, which was the paper. Now, I understand that you've got motor neurone disease, you have multiple sclerosis, there's a whole plethora, but one of the concerns we've had raised at this committee, Jade, is the pathways. It's about that engagement. It's from diagnosis, where do I go? You know, many of us on this committee have, I have 25 years living with a father with multiple sclerosis, for example, and those pathways aren't always clear, and what we're trying to do is get in our own minds clear. So as you've just heard, the narrative is about, we as community champions are often asked, well, where do you go? How do you get the support that's required? What we would like to see is some clarity, and I'm really welcome this £2.5 million, because I think when anybody is diagnosed with any neurological condition, it is like falling off the edge of a cliff. And historically, the family have been left to pick up the pieces in many, many instances, and we've heard that this morning from colleagues on this committee. So really welcome your attendance this morning. I hope this is something we can build on to increase that narrative. So the people and the residents of Worcestershire have very defined narratives out there when somebody sadly is defined, is diagnosed with something as awful as a neurological condition, because it is a shock, it is horrendous when you're trying to manage the situation, and as our 60,000 carers are now out there, currently, they're often left with many challenges in getting the correct care for their loved ones. So thank you, I do appreciate this. Jules Walton, please.
Thank you. Jules Walton, I'm the chief medical officer at Worcestershire Acute. I don't have any necessarily direct kind of involvement. I'm A&E by background for committee members who I have met before, but obviously I've got oversight of all the acute services running in through the acute trust currently. One of the things I did want to pull out about the wider brief around neurological conditions is I think it's important to acknowledge that certainly at the acute trust, our neurology service has been, in kind of a few years back, would have been viewed as a fragile service. So we were struggling with consultant oversight and weren't in the strongest of positions. I'm really pleased to say that that has moved on quite considerably, kind of over the last few years. We've now got a very strong consultant team at Worcestershire Acute with really strong nurse practitioner and nurse specialist kind of links, and that team have been incredibly proactive in looking at alternative staffing models and development of allied health professionals in those roles, which has had a huge impact, I think, on the delivery of care in those pathways of patients with neurological conditions in a very positive way. I'm also really pleased to say we've had a Getting It Right first time visit recently into neurology. I'm not sure whether councillors, committee members are aware of the GRF programme, so the Getting It Right first time programme, it's a national programme based on clinical best practice, and essentially, any provider that's delivering a service is benchmarked against those national best practice kind of guidelines, and you get visits from the experts in that field who are not necessarily, well, not local normally, so they come as a fresh pair of eyes and assess your service and help you. And the purpose of the GRF programme is supportive, it's to help you identify the gaps in your care and to identify or point you towards places that are delivering that really well, to help learn from other organisations. We had a GRF visit for neurology fortnight ago, a week, something like that, about 10 days back now, and we're still waiting for the formal written update on that, but the verbal feedback from that team was incredibly positive, and we're very pleased to say that for Worcestershire, and this isn't just the acute trust, because you'll see from the paper that a lot of our services are integrated across health and care and some of the other providers in that space, so certainly the acute can't take all of the credit for that at all, but we benchmarked incredibly strongly. And it was highlighted by the GRF team that some of the elements of that service for neurology as a collective were heading into the kind of exemplar, really, kind of categories, and they were going to be using some of the elements to help drive improvements and help guide others on how to deliver their services in neurology. So we're very pleased with that feedback, obviously waiting for the formal written report of that, which we can obviously update committee on in the future if that's helpful, but that was really good progress, so something we're pleased about in that patch.
Thank you very much, Jules. Julie, did you want to say anything briefly?
Yes, just to explain what my role is in neurology. I work as one of the specialist Parkinson's nurses, so I see patients who are newly diagnosed and referred to our service, and I'll see other Parkinson's plus syndromes which present like Parkinson's but sort of have a very different development of symptoms over time. I deal with things like tremor, and I see a lot of patients who go on to develop dementias in Parkinson's, so the whole gamut really of that type of movement disorder.
Thank you very much, Julie. Claire, please.
Hi, I'm Claire Smith. I'm one of the managers at Health and Care Trust, looking at community services and development of that neighbourhood health model. So the integrated neurology service falls within my portfolio, and really that's around community nursing, supporting patients living with long-term conditions. It's around initial assessments and offering of information, and around then the provision of annual follow-ups and access to physiotherapy and other specialist services as required to help patients live well in their own home.
Thank you very much indeed, Claire. Jane, please.
Hi, morning, everyone. I'm Jane Westwood, and I manage the older adult mental health service for the Health and Care Trust. So that includes both, the majority of the work we do is related to dementia, so diagnosis then support for patients and families who go into crisis. We also have, we see patients with mental health problems as well under our remit, so that's predominantly community-based across both counties, but we also have two inpatient units, one in Bromsgrove and one in Herefordshire.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to you all. So, panel, questions? We've got a whole plethora of them. We're starting with councillor Wild, because she was hot off the blocks, and then if you could just indicate to Sam Morris, please, we'll go through.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentations. I'm first out of the traps because in my ward, and it was referred to in the previous conversation about the importance of our role in the community. So as part of our role in the community, we do often see people who are struggling with dementia and Parkinson's in particular, but I think this is a broader question, really. People who are suspected of having these conditions have to wait an awful long time, perhaps more than 20 weeks on hearing. So that's the reality out there. What is being done right now to help reduce those waits, and these are stress and anxiety that patients and their carers experience whilst waiting for care? And I have a second question as well. For people living with these conditions, life can already feel overwhelming without having to navigate different parts of the health and care system. When support isn't joined up, it can add to the pressure on both patients and families. So my question is, these conditions really need joined-up support across hospitals, community teams and charities like Parkinson's UK. How well is that coordination working at the moment, and what more could be done to make things simpler and less stressful for patients and carers and their families?
Are you going to take that, Jade?
I'm going to make the start, and then I'll ask my colleagues to come in. Thank you very much for the two questions there. So with regard to waiting times, I think this is a really good area compared to some other services where the waiting times are coming down. I think there's a little bit of myth in our public, though, that they don't want to make a fuss, they think there's going to be a long wait, and they don't want to get back in touch if they feel that, you know, that the wait is adding to their anxiety. So your support in making sure people get their voices heard is very much appreciated. What we're doing to bring this waiting times down is looking at a couple of areas. Now, within the paper, it talks about getting the right number of the workforce, but we're also looking at the best way to be as productive as possible. This is really a partnership endeavour, and it starts with that first contact with the person, usually pressurised by their carer or their loved one to say, you really must go and see your GP. That's where the conversation starts, and making sure that we have the most accurate picture of the symptoms and the concern by the patient. Then there is really good engagement between the GP on to the hospital or the Health and Care Trust services, and this is where the dialogue isn't just a bit of paper, or a virtual bit of paper these days, but it's much more about making sure that there is support while the person is waiting, and then also keeping in contact. So the teams, and I'm sure they'll describe it better than I can, they do this checking out with patients, and that's really important, that if someone feels they are building up anxiety or there are worsening symptoms, they should use those points of contact. Sometimes it's a response to a text message, which for some members of our population doesn't work, for some it's that response to a clinic letter, for some it's a phone call. So the health service uses a range of mechanisms for those conversations. But increasingly so, as I say, we work as a partnership, so we respect and we talk to the voluntary and community sector, who again, members of the public are more likely to say, this is the impact of my wait, and the voluntary sector are very good, again, at communicating, for example, with our specialist nurses about the concerns they have for an individual. There's more we can do, and we want those waits to go down even further, clearly, but we need the support of the public in order to do that. The other bit on the joined-up services, and I guess I've touched on it, but for the areas that we are talking about today, we do have a specialty forum for neurology, and that's where the clinicians, the managers, the commissioners, we sit together and we try to review and also plan for the improvements further down the pathway. So we're forever evolving, really. In the world of dementia, we have dementia partnership, where we have members of the community, we have Health Watch, we have NHS England also sitting in that partnership, again, looking at ways that we can improve on joined-up support. But there are some challenges here. The NHS really doesn't use digital very well. We have a number of information systems that don't really talk to each other as simply as they could do, and these are some of the things that we're committed to over the next number of years, trying to make further improvements. I'm sure the team here will talk about the number of times they've got to use different systems for different things. That's all adding to how fragmented services are. You'll see in the paper also the talk about the dementia roadmap. That's the first bit of trying to pool as much information in one place as possible. We need to replicate that for all neurological conditions, so no patient has to go hunting, no carer sits there in the middle of the night feeling complete despair. We need to get this right. The team here will talk about personalised care, so that's, again, it's not about treating people as a group of conditions, it's making sure that all the needs of that person are looked at, considered, respected. But I'll ask colleagues to come in around the work they do around joined-up care, and I think, can I probably start with Jane, or to talk about some of the dementia joined-up work?
Yes, I mean, I can also answer about waits as well, if that's helpful. Within dementia, we have a dementia programme board, which sits monthly, and everybody that's involved with dementia care in the community is a part of that board, so voluntary care sector, the acute trust, ourselves in the Health and Care Trust, Health Watch as well comes to that. So we do try and work really closely together, and as things are raised, different work streams spin off that dementia programme board that we carry out between us. I think in terms of waits, we have worked really hard in Worcestershire to bring the waits down, and 20 weeks was our wait 18 months ago for dementia, for the first appointment for dementia diagnosis. That now is between two and eight weeks to see a nurse across all of the services, so we have done some fantastic work. We're still a little bit short on being able to diagnose in the way we would want to in a timely fashion, so we are still taking us a few weeks after that. But all of our patients who are referred will get a letter with the team they've been referred to and what the number is. GPs can also ask for more urgent referrals if they feel that the situation requires us to do something that isn't routine, and we have staff that can go out within 24 hours in those scenarios and signpost. If we do experience any waits in any particular area, then the letter that goes out will explain how long that wait is, and will advise anybody that if things change and the presentation becomes more urgent, that they can contact us and we can do something different if it isn't a routine. So I think we have made some really good progress in our efficiency over the last sort of 18 months, I would say.
Thank you very much indeed. Next question we have from councillor Richard Oudle, please.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the presentation which you gave us this morning. And naturally, the concentration is on the patient, which I can completely understand, but it does give me concern about the holistic approach, especially when looking after and support for family of patients who are often left out, people struggling to cope with the pressure of caring, especially if they're in full-time employment, which creates extra difficulties and pressures. So I'm interested in what kind of support we can provide with education, welfare, respite, social security, and whether, mostly because if the carer suffers, it definitely impacts and affects the patient, and that's not something which is widely understood by people who are not in the system. I'd be interested, now you've mentioned the extra resources which are going to become available, I'm interested in how they can be used to actually help the carer's family, the patient's family and their next of kin, especially those in full-time employment who are struggling to cope.
I'm happy to answer that. Everybody that comes through for diagnosing dementia...
Everybody that comes through for diagnosed dementia in Worcestershire, we ask the patient if they're able to tell us who they would like involved in their care and usually there are family members that are involved. We offer kind of a blended mix of how we will help carers to stay involved, including, you know, talks over computers if family members don't live near or having family members in the room. We also will offer services outside of the normal working hours for those families. Every patient who's diagnosed, carers are offered a chance to come to a carers information group where they can meet with other carers to find out about dementia and what help is out there. I'm really proud to say that we've had a huge input in working with families in older adult mental health. And so we now offer families as well the chance to have a more longer programme for those families who need a little bit more help if their stress levels are really high at home or if communication skills are broken down. So we really do work, I feel we really do work really hard with carers. We also have an abnormal nurse team who are specifically, their remit is to help the carer, so their patient is the carer rather than the patient, if that makes sense. So carers can phone up abnormal nursing, self refer themselves in Worcestershire at any point during their journey if they need that extra support. We also work closely with Worcester Association of Carers, who also do a lot of work with carers. So I do hope we are available for carers and, you know, if we're not, we want to hear about that, yeah.
If I may, the problem often is the carer does not want to identify as needing help. They try and cope until the system actually breaks. So I'd be interested to know how you identify carers who are in that kind of situation, who don't know where to go to for help and don't realise they can actually ask for help.
Obviously, when we go out to see patients, generally patients who live with dementia, there generally is someone that is there with that person or we generally. So we offer to speak to carers, we will observe what's happening in the household when we're there or what's happening in the clinic setting. And if we do believe that a carer is struggling, we will try really hard to enable that carer to do so. So we might go out in twos, so that one person will be talking to the patient, another person might say, oh, let me come and help you make a cup of tea in the kitchen and give that carer an opportunity. When we do the diagnostic appointments, there's a part of the assessment where the patient will fill in and a test, for want of a better word, and we ask the carer to sit out. Or during that time, while we're asking the carer to go outside, we'll ask them if they want to have a conversation with us separately. We also ask carers to fill in their own part to that assessment and they're able to tell us and then we can give them a call later. But it is tricky, we do recognise that sometimes people do go into crisis. We have a home treatment team specifically for older people in Worcestershire, so that can help, we can go and visit up to four times a day when somebody is in crisis. But I guess carers will have to, they have to tell us or we have to be able to spot it in order to be able to deliver some of these things, yeah.
Can I just come in at this point, understanding what you're doing in terms of dementia care? And I'm going to come to Simon Adams in one moment because I know he's got to leave. But it's that conversation, I'll take out the actual diagnosis, but look at the situation. So if you have a person that's a carer and they're trying to get help potentially from the GP, case in point, my experience, a UTI. After waiting nine hours, we end up on blues and twos because then the situation has deteriorated. What I would be suggesting is that there's like a marker on your medical records to say, this person presents as motor neurone disease, MS, Parkinson's, so that we actually can look and think, well, what's the medical history of this individual? Because with my experience, we're ending up with too many people in the system on blues and twos rather than the precautionary preventative action that can be taken earlier in the day even. Once you've been on a telephone call from nine o'clock in the morning and you've been trying to get hold of that GP and you've got to 11 o'clock at night and you've been told, there's no care now, can you dial 999? And that has happened consistently within the last 25 years for me. That carer in that position feels most embarrassed as if they've, a dereliction of duty, but also they've tried their hardest to get that person that care and the system has failed. What action can we do to fix this? Because, you know, we understand the acute hospital trust is really under undue pressure and massive pressure, but you've got to somehow, it is part of the preventative agenda, and if you've got a marker on that person's record, you've got more of a chance of fixing that in the home, in the community without entering the hospital system. Sorry. Who's going to take that? It's about how you put the marker on, you know, we're not an island, are we, any parts of our health system? And this one conversation, and Simon Adams gesticulating at me politely.
Can I just come in there? Because, I mean, when we're talking about out of hours services, the out of hours services that we have had have not had access to the shared care record, which has been a major issue because there is now in existence a shared care record, which I understand GPs, the acute trust and the Health and Care Trust now all have access to and their information feeds into it. But for various reasons, which I think are contractual related to cybersecurity and that sort of thing and data protection, the out of hours team haven't had access to it. So I don't know whether Jade might be able to elaborate on what the new out of hours contract would look like.
Just to come back Simon, this isn't out of hours, this starts as a normal day's work. This starts from a preventative perspective, that at nine o'clock in the morning, you'll ring in your GP saying, can you do something? And then you end up in an emergency situation, which Jules and the team are then picking up at night. No, 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 this starts in first thing in the morning and after eight hours of a deteriorating situation, you end up with an ambulance being called.
So there should be a red flag.
I've been through this as well, only six months ago with urosepsis, same thing.
So I think the point is here, it's about the preventative and I know Jules wants to come in, because I want to try and prevent where we can, and I'm sure everybody who's in this room, people going through the doors of that A and E department, at a point when it's a crisis point. It's about crisis, it's prevention of crisis, isn't it? Jules.
Thank you. You're absolutely right that there are certain elements of our healthcare system across the board, and obviously I've come from the acute perspective, but I'm also a patient, I'm a resident of Worcestershire, my family live here and I've had the same experience as you, even kind of in the position that I work in, exactly the same experience. So I think there is absolutely something we need to do better in this space. I believe in some areas and for some patient groups and some conditions, we've actually got this really right. So if you take for example, patients who are undergoing chemotherapy, they have an incredibly clear escalation line, they know exactly what they're looking for, their families know, their carers know, there's a really clear escalation line for that group of patients that works generally very well. I think where we need to learn a bit better as a system is how to put that in place for other groups of patients that have predictable escalation points. And the reference that you're making about kind of urosepsis in certain neurological conditions is very common. And I think we ought to learn a little bit better from some of the other areas that have got this right, to put in place a system that the patients and their carers understand, can be educated in, kind of by our teams, who'll be able to do that really competently, really easily, that would then facilitate a quick and easy access point. And that involves getting the shared care record right, it involves working with our primary care colleagues, our GP colleagues, our specialist nurses, those teams, just to make sure that that pathway exists for a start. It's doable because we do it in some areas already. I think what we need to do is get better at linking all that up together and we are getting better. And I think neurology is a good example of where we are integrating our kind of work a little bit better. We at the acute have been working with Lisa and her team in kind of public health about how we link up this information that we've got, because we've all got different pockets of information about patient groups. We at the acute, as you rightly said, have the information about the escalation point normally. We have a lot of information about who ends up at the acute in a crisis and we need to therefore work backwards to say, well, actually, we know this group end up with us when they probably shouldn't. How do we work that back and put something in here that prevents them getting to there? That's what we need to do. It's not easy, to kind of councillor's point, that's not an easy process strangely, but we know it's doable. So we need to learn from those other areas that are doing it well and try and get some of those processes in place, which we're absolutely committed to doing, I think, as a system.
Thank you, Jules, and I really appreciate the fact that you understand this situation because it must surely be about patient profiling, you know, diagnosis, patient profiling and your data must tell you exactly what you could do. The problem is now, or the challenge is now, how we make this happen. Because, you know, and this needs to happen pretty quickly because we get to wintertime when we've got all the other challenges with flu, Covid, everything else that comes through those hospital doors. And what I'm trying to do is through what the actions we're taking here and discussing, is prevent that pressure. Jules.
Yeah, exactly that. And this is a piece of, or this is work that I think we need as a system to be doing much more proactively over the next few years. Because exactly that point, we've all got data, what we're not doing is linking the data up. So Lisa's team has got a load of data, we've got data, Health and Care Trust have got data, we've all got data that tells us a little piece of each kind of patient journey, I suppose, and it's linking all that together so we can put the right prevention in to prevent those or to stop those escalations and also just to improve the general health and wellbeing of all of our community, really. I think that's absolutely what we need to be focusing on going forward. But again, it needs the resource and the time and it actually needs the headspace. And for healthcare providers, that's probably the biggest challenge because we're so consumed by the everyday here and now, that that headspace to work together as organisations can be the biggest challenge. But that's something we've got to make the time and space for.
I think if you took yourselves out for two or three days and actually worked this through like a flow chart, the financial, let alone the individual outcomes would be significant. Jade? Yes, I think what you've just described is what the NHS is trying to do around neighbourhood health. So whereby our GPs here in Worcestershire are looking at all long term conditions and looking at that risk stratification of their GP profile. What this should mean is that we have really good indication of families, so not just the patient, but the whole of that family, that actually if we coordinate better, we save that escalation, but also we maximise their wellbeing into their life, rather than always treating people as a collection of symptoms. So we know what we've got to do, we've got exciting plans in Worcestershire around neighbourhood health that will see these specialists that we've got around the table today, they will continue to work out in the communities, but with a better interface with GPs in primary care. And that is all around using things like the shared care record, which in answer to Simon's point, I don't let that one go either, he's absolutely right. We're just finishing off the procurement for the out of hours and I know you're going to talk about it in January, but we are changing that. So that provider or providers will be part of the shared care record. So we're starting to get that better joined up working.
That's really good news Jade, and can I put your name against this flow chart? Thank you. Councillor, before I come to you councillor Oudle, and I know you're indicating, Simon Adams, you've got to leave, haven't you?
I have, I'm afraid.
Do you wish to make any further comments before you go?
Two very quick comments then. The first is, I was at a Parkinson's group in Morven about four weeks ago. I've got to say, this is a shout out for the nurses, they can't talk more highly of the nurses. And also from Jules' perspective, I was talking to somebody who I think had been to Oxford for some very specialist treatment and he couldn't talk, you know, he was just overwhelmed with it. One thing that was, the one issue was there though, was about the information flow to carers. And that is something, and I won't talk about, I won't go into any detail about our dementia report, except to say, I think it has landed very well with the NHS and the council and the dementia programme board. I think most of the recommendations have been implemented. They did tend to revolve around support, information, knowledge about pathways, the fact that the staff needed to be, I guess, be more empathetic perhaps maybe and understand, I don't mean the staff dealing with dementia, but generally within the care and social care world, staff needed to be a little bit more aware, particularly aware of what carers had to deal with, picking up on councillor Oudle's point. And there is a complete section on carers, there's 51 recommendations in five areas. So if you like a light read, apologise for the length of it, it's worth a read, but I've got to say, I think it's landed pretty well.
Thank you very much, it's an excellent report. We have passed it around the health overview and scrutiny committee, so we thank you for that and thanks for your attendance this morning as well.
Thanks very much.
Councillor Oudle, please.
Yeah, I think I'm a bit more reassured after asking my question because I was came in quite concerned. But one of our jobs as a scrutiny committee is to identify issues and needs and escalate them if we feel we have to. And I think I've just heard that there is an issue and need for us to escalate as a scrutiny committee. We've identified there is a need for resource and time to enable what the chair's asked for to happen. So what I'm asking at this point is, who do we escalate that to? Where do we actually put that request for more resource and time to enable this to happen? I know there's a flow chart and all sorts of things, but let's go to whoever is the gatekeeper of resource and time and make that formal request for that to be released to enable this to happen, because it will significantly help the carers and the patient and the service as a whole if we can enable this to happen.
Thank you councillor Oudle. Jade, please.
Yeah, I think escalation's probably the wrong word because neighbourhood health is one of our top priorities for Worcestershire, but you'll also be pleased to know the improvements to neurology and long term conditions is the other. So the two combined means actually you just need to hold us to account for the progress we make.
Thank you, we look forward to doing that Jade. Realistic timeframe works, please?
I'm just thinking of your programme, I would have thought by next summer, if you want to invite us back, we'll do an item on neighbourhood health and the impact on patients with long term conditions and their families and the plan.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks Jade. Councillor Wells, please.
Chairman, thank you. And first of all, can I just acknowledge the passion and I think real empathy that you guys are expressing today for patients who are struggling with these issues. So thank you for that, you are the right people to be doing this. First question relates to comments being made already about care, family care and so on. But what happens if you're a single gentleman in his 70s, recently diagnosed with Parkinson's? How does he cope without any family support?
Yeah, very good question. I see lots of people in that situation, living alone with a new diagnosis. So when they come to see me, usually a lot of the time will be spent sort of pulling apart the problems of living alone with a progressive condition. And it's all very individualised as to what you do with them, but so, but there's lots of help out there, it's just sort of signposting them on to what's appropriate really. So it's a very individual, Parkinson's is not the same for any two people. There may be real characteristics like tremor and things, but it's a very different picture. So it's very patient focused on what they would want in terms of support. So the national charity is very supportive in terms of Parkinson's UK, we all signpost them to that, where they can get, excuse me, benefits advised, care advice, that type of thing. There's also the local hospices, Kemp, St Richard's, Primrose Hospice, Day Hospice Services offer lots of support. There's the talking therapies for Worcester for the psychological support. So there's a whole gamut of things out there, it just depends on what, you know, what the patient's needs are and wants.
Thank you Julie.
Chair, if I could come in with a supplementary, it still seems to me it still puts the onus on the elderly gentleman to make those connections. And with fragile mental health as well as all the physical conditions, that could be quite challenging, but I'll just park that one there. Could I just move on to something else? I recently had a resident come to me as their local councillor, I don't know why he came to me, and he had been waiting five and a half months for his initial appointment. And the day before, he had a phone call to say his appointment had been cancelled because the neurologist wasn't going to be available in Morven. And I understand that person's now been given a new date, but it's some time from here. So that five months is actually six months, it's seven months, it's eight months, it's nine months, it's getting on for a year, which isn't great, is it? The other thing, or two quick things. So the wait of 20 weeks, and then there's a ref- So the wait of 20 weeks, and then there's a reference in the report for 18 weeks typically being the time to, to connect with the health, so the, with you guys, your team. So is that 20 plus 18, or does that one co-working at the same time? And if that's the case, it sounds like you're going to be having people before they're diagnosed. So 20 months, 20 months, sorry, 20 weeks for initial diagnosis, 18 weeks to connect with you guys, is that 38 weeks or is that, how does that work? And finally, just a, a specific question which has been raised with me recently, is the annual appraisal is, is quite a long time apart. And in practical terms, if there's going to be a change of medicine, medication, weaning off one into another, reducing that, increasing that, is that something that can be done by nurses, or does that have to get reference to a GP or back to the neurologist?
In terms of the medication, yes, the nurses do it if they're prescribers. Not all Parkinson's nurses are prescribers, in which case they would seek advice from the consultant, the patient's consultant. In terms of waiting times, I don't orchestrate the, the waiting lists, unfortunately, they are just booked in with me. But from what I can gather, our neurology service has an advice and guidance service. So if the GP contacts that service, we usually book them in straight away, there's not usually a wait for that. But the, for the waiting list, I'm sorry, I can't answer that bit for you.
Julie, did you want to come in then?
Sure, sorry. That's okay, thank you. I'd like to extend my apologies to the patient you referenced, because we don't like anybody waiting any longer than they have to, and cancellation of appointments at last minute is something we really try and avoid, kind of at the acute. So please, could you extend our apologies back to that patient? We do monitor our waiting times really closely, we do monitor cancelled appointments as well, or last-minute cancellations, to try and eliminate those, recognising they have a huge impact on patients, on their carers, people have taken time off work to get people to appointments. So it's not insignificant and it's not taken lightly from our perspective. So we are working on that. The wait times, my understanding is though that it's not cumulative, those are kind of in parallel. And often with specialised services, there are parallel kind of lines of, and if you've been through those systems yourself, you, you'll know that, that you'll see potentially a nurse specialist, you may have some diagnostics, some, some tests, you may then see a consultant, and, and those often run in parallel. So they certainly are not cumulative, those would be 20 weeks, 18 weeks for each strand there.
Thank, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Bell, you had your hand up, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have got three questions, and one is for Jade, one is for Jules, and one is for the team, or maybe more appropriate for Jules as CMO. But thank you, everyone, and giving us all the information and what you have been doing. So the first question for Jade about, so we've got about 9,000 people, I guess, diagnosed with dementia. And you've mentioned people don't come forward for diagnosis, but just taking another perspective on it, majority of, some of the people who live alone, and especially in Alzheimer's or dementia, we know it's not only limited to elderly age group anymore. So people are digitally excluded as well. And they can't come forward for diagnosis. There is no system in place at the moment from screening point of view for, you know, like we send screening out for other things from primary care, so it doesn't go out to them. Is there anything in pipeline that how we can pick up those people who can't come forward and who, who don't even have, dementia is one thing, that you don't know it's happening to you, so, you know, how, how can we pick up so that before they get actually really worse? I can do the second question, or you want to come in first and then I can go to Jules? Is that all right?
Thank you, and you're absolutely right. Out of our, if I just clarify the numbers in the paper, so at the moment, we know there's just over 5,200 patients with a diagnosis of dementia. But in our communities, looking at all the risk factors, our population health, we think actually there is more people living with dementia, as you point out, they, they may not identify, or they may not want to go down a diagnostic pathway, but that volume of patients is around about 9,600. So where can they go and how do we identify them? There isn't a, a screening programme as there is for, for things like bowel cancer, unfortunately in this area. But we do have a number of services that if that person touches that service, they will start that conversation. Have you thought of, have you noticed, are you concerned about? And I have to say, this is where it is usually carers that encourages that person, or someone that knows that individual really well, saying, I think it's now got to the point where I think we need the conversation. And that person may or may not be at the stage of wanting to go down that diagnostic pathway. In terms of the NHS services, and actually adult social care is another place where identification occurs, we have people in our wards, so if you end up in a hospital, they will be looking out for this. Our emergency departments, when somebody works in, comes in in a crisis point, they will look to screen as well. And the GP, the GP is critical here. You know, somebody that comes for that fourth UTI into the, into primary care is going, the GP is going to start to, to unpick a little bit more in their holistic approach. Although we have no plans for any wide screening tool, and that's obviously something that doesn't, not, no plans nationally either, where we want to go is make our communities as dementia friendly as possible. So it becomes a natural thing to consider how your cognitive functions are working. It becomes a good thing to do that diagnosis rather than a scary thing, because it enables you to, to live well, knowing that there's support wrapped around you, and you can plan for the future. So that's where our conversations with the public and things like dementia week needs to go.
Thank you. I have another question for Jules. Thank you, Jule. It's about stroke service. And I'm glad you mentioned about a point of being fragile at one point in the acute trust. I can just talk from my experience of doing my shift in the acute trust in Worcestershire when I was a registrar level doctor and in recess, and it all felt very unsafe and unsupported, dealing with a stroke patient and just having this tele-stroke machine there with no senior cover. And to the point, I decided I will not do a shift there again because it's all very unsafe. So I think things have changed. I mean, it's really positive that, you know, there is staff on board and nurse practitioners on board. And so from out-of-hours, I've been just picking up on some information about out-of-hours stroke service, and how is that going from senior cover point of view? Of course, things work very well on a good day, you know, when it's daytime, but the problem happens mainly for stroke services, being thin on ground out of hours or on holidays. Is that something which is working well now? And the other question is just part of the waiting time initiatives. Again, I was picking up on some figures from the acute trust point of view to make use of the private sector to clear waiting times, waiting, under waiting time initiatives. We, we could do better from the acute trust point of view, using that part of the resource which is available out there.
Thank you. So first bit, first, our stroke services are now 24/7, kind of in-house and run very smoothly, good outcomes, do well on the, I can never remember what the acronym stands for, which is embarrassing, isn't it? The SNAP data, but it's stroke something or other. Yeah, which is how we're measured kind of on those. And yeah, I've been delivering a 24/7 service now for some time, which is obviously a, a big improvement, which is good. In terms of waiting times, so yes, there's lots of initiatives across the trust to use other providers or other opportunities to drive down waiting times. But linking back to previous conversations, those are sometimes not the most efficient use of resources. So we have to be careful and we have to be mindful about what we're doing in that space. I, I have to be honest, I'm not cited in neurology per se, I don't think we've got any additional services in neurology per se, and I don't think there's any current conversations about it, but I will check that kind of when I get back to the ranch and kind of update if there is anything that people would like to know about.
Thanks very much, Jules. Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Price and then councillor, oh, councillor Harrison actually was first. Sorry, you go first councillor Price, then councillor Harrison.
Thank you, Chair. I was particularly struck by the point Jade made, that many people don't want to make a fuss. I think that really reflects what we hear from residents living with long-term neurological conditions. They often just get on with things quietly, and that's exactly why it's so important to make sure their voices are heard through the work like this. So I'd like to build on what's already been said, not on waiting times themselves, but how we are improving communication, supporting families, and making sure services are designed around those lived experiences. So you mentioned improving efficiency and workforce balance. How are patients themselves involved in shaping that redesign? And are there structured patient panels or feedback mechanisms that work within the neurology Pathfinder's work? Additionally, residents often tell us that the hardest part isn't the wait itself, but the uncertainty during it. So what's being done to improve communication with patients while they're waiting for the diagnosis or review? Thank you.
So I'm going to take the commissioning aspect, and then I'll ask colleagues to, to talk about what happens on the ground when someone's waiting. So you're absolutely right. We as commissioners love the opportunity to come out and talk in the community with people that experience these pathways. It's so crucial to be able to walk in their shoes, but also to understand other things that we could do as a partnership. And by that, I mean not just how accessible is the NHS, but how can we work across the partnership to impact housing? Look at employment, you know, these are the things that keep people healthy, healthy and well and connected. So I, I offer the, the view in, in that lens really. In terms of what's being done in this space, well, you've heard from Jane about the dementia partnership, that's got people with lived experience as part of the, of that group. And in neurology, we've been looking at reviewing all the services. So again, and again in stroke actually, both of those areas, we've had sessions with members of the public, people with lived experience, to hear their, their views and test out with them as we develop what we call in commissioning our service specifications. So what are we going to buy? What outcomes are we going to work with our partners to achieve? And that engagement just helps us reflect those views. It's a crucial part of getting commissioning right. I'll, with regard to what happens when you're waiting for a diagnosis, I'll probably ask Claire, and then whether Jane wants to add to that.
So within the community, our neurology services tend to pick up patients once that diagnosis has been established. But we will, we offer a newly diagnosed group, which we, we do in conjunction with Parkinson's UK, which offers patients and their carers an opportunity to come together, hear about information regarding their condition, information regarding support that's available out there in the community, and offer them the opportunity to join together as a peer network. So that will often happen sometimes before they've had their first appointment with their specialist nurse. And they will have regular reviews of their specialist nurse, and there will be a, a point of contact for them. So if there's anything else they need to know, or if they would need, if there is something changing and they want to speak to a nurse, they've got the opportunity to have that either another appointment, or a telephone consultation, or whatever's appropriate, so that they can touch base with the services they need to.
Thank you very much Claire.
Sorry, I've got one, I've got one follow-up if that's okay. So we mentioned Parkinson's UK. So how is the work being conducted with Parkinson's UK being included in the pathway design work?
So we're just commencing the new pathway work with Parkinson's. We've, we've, we've had our initial Pathfinder meeting, where we've started to look at some of the process mapping which you talked about earlier. And we are looking at now inviting stakeholders, so Parkinson's UK will be a key stakeholder around the table when we move forward with that work.
Thank you very much indeed. Great. So councillor Harrison, and then we go to councillor Ecock, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Could you tell me something more, please, on, on, thank you, the, the pathway for, the priority pathway for, for headache services, please? Because you cover sort of named problems in more depth in this than you do headache services, so please tell me about it.
Well, I'll try and answer it as best I can, it's not my speciality, but I know there's a lot of new things going on at the acute trust, and we have a new nurse practitioner, Lynne, who, it'd be great she was here today, who's, who's leading that headache service. So from my recollection, there are lots of new clinics being set up for headache management. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, not, not really, but I think perhaps we'd need to tag it on to a future meeting because it's kind of affects me as well.
Okay, I think we'll take that. Jules, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I was just going to ask councillor, what specifically kind of information did you want, just to help guide us?
Well, lots of things in there that I've heard of, Parkinson's, MS, motor neurone, and you, you mentioned at the start of the, the paper, epilepsy, migraine and cavernoma. But, but I can, I can see where you'd look, put migraine and cavernoma in with headache services, but it just seemed to be that if you've got a priority pathway for it, it must be more notable than, than it comes over from the paper.
I understand. Yes, so the, the way that neurology or neurological conditions are broken down, because there are so many, and the presentation or the way patients present the kind of symptoms they have, or, you know, the way they, the things that they access help for that can go on to be being diagnosed as neurological condition, means that certain conditions have to, or certain groups get managed in a different way. So the, the paper at the beginning breaks that down into those kind of groups that, that sit naturally together by, by the nature of the condition. So there is a specific headache pathway, we've got a specific, so our consultants, of which we've got eight now, tend to subspecialise, so they're all general neurologists, but they will all subspecialise and take a lead in each of those areas. And what Julie was just referencing is, we've had the recent appointment, well, not, not that recent now actually with, with Lynne, in that, and, and talking, as I said at the beginning, about the very proactive way that that team are managing the workload in terms of using the workforce that they've got. We've now got our nurse specialists very much kind of front and centre, and often the first point of contact for new patients under the, the kind of supervision of the individual consultants with those specialties. And headache is a specific one now that's been subspecialised down, which means that group of patients get hopefully better access, but also direct to the people they actually need to see, rather than in that wider group, so it kind of narrows it down a bit. We didn't touch on it in the paper, because we weren't entirely sure, I think, of, of what kind of council wanted today, so we went for the two most common conditions that sit within the neurology kind of umbrella, just to give you a bit more detail on those, but happy to kind of update, provide any more information on the others as required.
Thank you very much indeed. Thanks, Jules. Councillor Ecock, please.
Thank you, Chair. My question is again on family support. Having had a family member with dementia and another one with motorone disease, at that time, there was no signposting for the families to go to, to get support or advice. Can I ask, please, what support do the families get when a member of the family is diagnosed with a neurological condition? We know people with dementia and their carers are involved with a number of work stream groups and memory cuffs. What other groups are available for the families, especially when a family member is diagnosed with motorone disease? Is this all down to the voluntary sector, or can we make more use of the voluntary sector going forward? Also, what support is there for families that have a member of their family in a care home? home for dementia? Thank you.
Who would like to take that, please? Claire, am I looking to you? Please.
Yeah, in terms of dementia, I think I already mentioned that we offer carers information groups at the point of diagnosis. In both Herefordshire and Worcestershire, it's through different providers, so Age UK currently in Worcestershire. Everybody should have a named person that they can go to after the point of diagnosis, and that person will contact every family for an annual review, and then signpost them into some of the things that you've mentioned that are on offer in the community, memory cafes being one of them. We do recognise this hasn't worked as well in Worcestershire, which is hence why the post-diagnostic tender is looking to improve that. It works a lot better in Herefordshire. And I think that we're very hopeful that that named person will be that primary link for families of what is going on. I think we've also mentioned the dementia roadmap, which gives an outline of in your area, what groups are available for your loved one. So we do hope to improve on that.
From a neurology perspective, we have some specialist nurses that focus and support patients living in the community with MND. So the nurses will take a holistic approach to assessment of the patient and the family at the same time, to establish what support the family might need in the weeks and months ahead. The nurses also work really closely with our specialist centre in Stoke, so they're able to offer that sort of specialist support and that sort of social support in the patients' homes throughout the journey.
Thank you very much. Next question, councillor McSweeney, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for telling us a lot more about this. I've just got a very specific question you mentioned here about specialist inpatient wards. And I'm assuming this is intended largely as a very temporary thing before people go back into the community. I was going to ask, the question is, what's the pressure like on that? Is it sufficient? Do you get overflow from that? And from a capacity perspective, is it suitable? Do you need to change anything?
We have two dementia wards in our counties, one in Bromsgrove, which is 12 beds, and one in Herefordshire, which is 10 beds. Currently, I'd say we do just about have the right capacity. In Worcestershire, the hospital at home team, which I mentioned earlier, which is a team which works for people living in crisis, has managed to help people stay in their own homes for a lot longer. Previously, before we had that team, there wasn't much support available out of hours for patients and carers living with dementia. So that has helped. I guess our greatest difficulty is the number of care home beds that there are in the counties, and the length of time it takes us. When somebody does come into a ward, if they're not going back home, or they're going from one care home, which now no longer commit their needs to another care home, we do have some considerable waits during that process of organising that care home placement. So we do sometimes see patients on our wards for longer than we would like, while we're waiting to sort that out. But in general, we don't have long waits for dementia beds. We try and work fairly efficiently.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. You answered the question I meant to ask, which I...
Thank you. Councillor Miller, I think you wanted to ask a question, didn't you?
Thank you, Karen. Yes, in fact, it would have been ideal if Simon had still been here, because I think it's something that, I first started out on the CHC, that's 34 years ago, and I hear the same things now as I was hearing then. And it seems to be, we remodel a service, we relook at it, and the pressures are worse now than they was then, because there are more people. And the one question I was going to ask Simon is, is the NHS fit for purpose now? With the demands on the system from the capacities that they are dealing with, and also the demands on the staff that are being put up on the staff? The pressures on the nurses, the nurses going around, tremendous pressures, being given far more work than they can deal with. And basically, what Mal was asking me to ask questions, you've answered most of these questions, and I think the only one is workforce training and commissioning priorities. How is that being looked at in the future? You mentioned IT, and the non-connection of IT. This has been going on, and millions have been wasted on IT in the NHS. It was looked at quite some 20 years ago, that each patient would have their records on a disc, or on one of the SOS badges. So anybody picking them up, whether it would be the 999 services, paramedics, whatever, they'd have their full information on that disc of what medication they're taking, when they last had the visit to the GP, to the hospital. And this was being looked at. Nothing has happened. Now, we know, when I sat on the CHC, we were sat in the old hospital in Castle Street. And, yeah, and it was looked at, the new hospital, PFI and everything that, and it was said that that hospital was fit for the next 25 years. Now, we've sort of, we've gone past that now. I know we've modified it, but is it fit for purpose?
So I'm going to just interject here.
Are you supported by your senior role?
Well, in terms of demands of the NHS, I think it's very, we have to make it very clear that we've got an aged population, we've got more people, fortunately, growing into old age, and with that comes additional demands, and we understand that. But in terms of what's happening for prevention, prevention's really key to this, Tony. What we can pick up earlier and take actions in our earlier part of our lives has significant impacts in our older years.
I've been a carer for 40 years, Karen.
And I understand that. And, you know, the point is here, it's the bigger picture, it's master planning. We all hold the NHS really dear to our hearts, and we recognise that parts, at times in our life when we need it, it is there. On the whole, it's there for you.
I agree.
So it's about, I think, Simon's not here to answer that question about future proof in the NHS, but there are challenges there. A lot of money's going into it, and we understand that, but what we want to do is to improve the outcomes. And I think that speaks for all the medical professionals that are here. We're all here to try and achieve the best we can. In terms of the other part of your question that Mel had asked, I don't know if, Jade can pick that up, please, for us? Thank you. So with regard to the workforce and the commissioning intentions, actually, we've just published our 26, 27 commissioning intentions, and that's on our website. I can send you the link to that. But within that document, we talk about strong, long-term conditions, doing the early intervention and prevention, and working with our partners. That's our ambition. I said that right at the beginning in the introduction to this paper. That's our road of where we want to go. We must continue to deliver high-quality care for all our patients, regardless of the demands that we face. And that's why we come together in partnerships, that's why we have things like neurological specialty forums, to always continuously review how we work and how we can work well together. On the commissioning intentions, we've talked about doing that roadmap really for neurological conditions, and starting to move more into that prevention, early intervention. The paper itself talks about the journey for dementia care, and I think we've already gone through how we want to increase the numbers, but support people better and well. As key amongst all of this is keeping our workforce, whether it's our workforce in the NHS, the workforce in care services, or more generally, really well-trained and aware of all of these conditions. So within our partnership work, we spend time talking to people that run supermarkets, for example. We spend time talking to students at the university and our local colleges. And these trusts will tell you about their mandatory training and their specialised training. They are the experts. All of that creates the right culture, the right awareness, that hopefully, the patient, their families, and the place that they live in, so their communities, can support the ongoing needs for these long-term conditions.
Thank you very much indeed.
Karen, could I just say, thank you, Jade, and thank you to the team. I realise the pressures and the work that you do, and your dedication.
Thank you, Tony. Councillor Oodle, councillor Kumar, councillor Bell, and then Dr Lisa McNally I have left on the list, and that'll be the end of the questioning. So starting with councillor Oodle.
Well, I'll be as brief as I possibly can, which is maybe an unfair question, and I ask it for personal reasons. There's one very important neurological condition, which is incredibly rare, but is not mentioned in your report, and that's variant CJD. Often misdiagnosed as Parkinson's or dementia, and we'll never know the actual numbers, because only a post-mortem can identify. Can I seek some assurances that identification and care and support policies are actually in place in Worcestershire? So when VCGD is potentially an issue, or potentially a cause of an illness, that it is properly identified?
So I think earlier on, we talked about, well, I think Julie mentioned, that actually there's a number of care pathways in neurological services. And Jules mentioned about having those consultants and nurses actually, that have specialist skills. We do have a pathway, and we have multiple pathways, and that's just one of them. And that's how the team bring their specialist skills together. What we don't do so well is that identification. You're absolutely right, it's a post-mortem, so we are a little bit not wanting to go that down, that route, really. But that doesn't prevent us from having a really good understanding about how we can support patients, and that starts back with your GP. So the consultants from the hospital, the specialist nurses, they do engage in the GP training programme, in order to make sure everyone has that awareness. The paper talks about, we're currently reviewing all the neurological pathways as part of our work going forward. So watch this space. What we need to do is make that pathway available to the public, so the public can understand what the journey looks like. That's stage two.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Kumar, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for your excellent presentation. I'm just going to summarise two or three things which have been talked about, but ask a specific question related to that. There will be an element of operational matter as well. So, okay, so we're talking about strategic planning and future readiness. We talked about 20-week waiting time, which has gone up further and further. We've got an ageing population. We have difficulty in accessing early diagnosis. So what kind of forecasting you are doing as a modelling, you talked about the levels are going down from 20 to 18, but that's still a long period. So what are you looking at? How the structure of the staffing will work? And that is where the operational model comes in. How many new patients, and how many follow-up patients are seen in a morning clinic? Because based on that, you can forecast why the waiting lists are long. So can you just tell me about forecasting, the modelling, and the operational aspect, please? Thank you.
So I'm going to start with an ICB view, which is not your question, but it just reflects how we do planning together. So every year, people like me sit down with both trusts, and we talk about the pressures. We talk about the change in the number of footfall or referrals that these services receive. We also then talk about, actually, what ideas, what innovation did these colleagues have for doing things differently? So we don't always just go, that's what we done last year, plus or minus 5%, 10%, that sounds about right. So we do that joint work on planning. Then each trust takes that work in-house, and they have different approaches to planning, but they look at it at a specialty area, a service level, understanding what the forecast demand should be for the year ahead. Right here, right now, NHS England have asked us to do that over a longer term, and we're, quite frankly, we're quite delighted. We've done it for so long, there's an annual planning round. The thought of doing it for three years just enables us to consolidate and start to, I think, that's the real example of future-proofing our services. They do that exercise, and then we come back together. Because what we don't want is the pressures in the services not being acknowledged by the people that hold the purse, so people like me with regard to the resource. I'm not saying the purse stretches all the way around, but then we have a conversation about where the priorities sit. And that then links back to those commissioning intentions I mentioned a few moments ago, about where we put our resources. But I'll ask Jules to come in with a acute trust perspective of that operational planning, talking about the services at that specialty level.
Thanks, Jade. It's a really good question, councillor, and it's one that, I won't look as far as to say troubles us, but it's one that we do need to give some real thought to, and do give some real thought to. The biggest issue, or one of the biggest issues you have with delivering a service is the people power. It's, if I can use the phrase, having the bums on seats to actually do the work. And unfortunately, you can't just say, we think we're going to have, based on our population demographics, an extra 5% of patients who will be diagnosed with dementia or Parkinson's next year, therefore we need one and a half new neurologists and three more nurse specialists. Because the nurse specialist and neurologist, you can't just pull them off the shelf. You've got to kind of build them into the pipeline as well, and you'll be aware yourself, the development of kind of medics and nurses takes time. And I don't think as a health service, we've been as smart about that over the years as we could have been. But that's not restricted to Worcestershire. That says globally, I think, to be absolutely honest, recognising that this is the way our population demographics are going. We know which conditions are going to probably, you know, we're going to need the services for, and therefore it's making sure we've got the workforce to do so. And that's why I think this team has actually, has been really proactive in that space, which I said at the beginning, and has gone down some very, not very, but has been proactive in going down alternative models of delivering healthcare, maybe away from that very traditional consultancies, consultant gives instruction, others do, to actually, others are very capable of seeing, assessing, diagnosing, putting a plan in place, as independent specialists in their own right. And therefore, that model has got to flex. And I think we need to be better at doing that. We are at the acute, trying really hard to move with that, and develop our nurse specialists, our allied health professionals in those roles, but also to look at alternative ways of developing our consultant workforce, our medical workforce as well. There are different ways you can get on to the specialist register, which is essentially your registration as a consultant with a specialty in something. There are different ways you can do that, and so we're trying to embrace some of the other ways, a bit more of a grow-your-own system, and targeting particularly some of our more fragile services. And again, this is where neurology have been really successful, because they've used that route as well to grow their consultant workforce, from, I think, one point something or other five years ago, up to eight now. So they've been really successful, because neurologists do not grow on trees, they're not just out there. So they've been very proactive, and I think we need to do more of that in our planning.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Bell, please.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any particular question, it's just a few suggestions, which is again summarising and just taking everyone's point of view here. So as councillor Miller mentioned about the IT, so of course NHS has spent hundreds of millions of pounds on fixing IT things, but the simple thing, which we still have a challenge, is if a patient had an X-ray done in a different hospital in the country, and as a clinician, I can't look at that X-ray. So that's a simple thing to fix, which of course, you know, we all aspire to do. The neighbourhood health is another, seems to be a golden bullet here, but it's a long shot, it's four, five years down the line. But in the immediate run, what we can do, you know, streamline our pathways, the best friend at this point is the community partners, especially the primary care from neurology point of view, and from headache, for example, headache pathway. You know, we need to streamline pathways with the community partners, STAC, our ambulatory care, our front door urgent care services, they need to have that, and headache pathway lies in there. The third thing is about, mentioned about GP training programme, and I'm a clinical leader and A&E consultant, and I'm advocate for specialist doctors in the trust. So, you know, Jules have mentioned about having alternative medical workforce. So I have raised this to the GP training programme directors as well. So gone are those days when, you know, GPs... directors as well. So gone are those days when, you know, GPs had years of experience and then they went into GP training because GP sits in the primary care and they are also a part of the social working team there. They need to understand that social structure and culture. But right now what's happening due to staff shortage, we are employing GPs from overseas who are NHS novices, doctors, they've never worked in NHS. And we've raised that and GP training is already a very short training programme, it's only three years. You do that and you sit in the community and you become in charge of the community. So there is a gap there, you know, they don't understand the social structure and how it is. So it takes a bit of time to pick up on elderly people who are living alone there, how they are living, what are their challenges, family and friends are not around, it's a different system. So there is gap there from the community sector. I think at this point our best friend is to somehow streamline those pathways and work it better for everyone. And I understand from acute trust point of view, because I work in acute trust as well and the challenges we have, we can only get it better. From ICB point of view as well when we merge that, you know, some accountability will come on to the acute trust but if we have that shared vision with the community side from sitting in acute trust will work really better.
Thank you very much councillor Bell. Last but not least, Dr Lisa McNally, our director of public health, I think you wanted to speak, didn't you Lisa? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I hope this isn't too off topic but it feels timely to ask and to speak to NHS colleagues about. We've talked a lot about demand today, increasing demand. And you can't help noticing winter is coming. And there are many predictions that this is going to be one of the most difficult winters the NHS has ever seen. Most notably because of the flu strain this year, the HFN2 flu strain. So I just wanted to, wonder if we could just spend 60 seconds talking about staff wellbeing. NHS staff are under demand that we've never seen before and it's going to get worse. And maintaining their wellbeing is not just important for them as individuals we value in the community but also it's important for patient care to maintain staff wellbeing. Public health have just put some funding into the acute trust to help with staff wellbeing programmes. But I just wondered if colleagues could say something a little bit about what's happening in their organisations around staff wellbeing. And in particular maybe about vaccination because we've talked a lot about our older members of the community today and this HFN2 strain makes our older adults particularly vulnerable. So it's important that we see high vaccination in staff groups as well. So wellbeing and in particular vaccination of staff.
Thank you very much. Jules, are you happy to pick that up please?
I am. So wellbeing, it's a really timely point and I was going to mention it actually when councillor was saying earlier and the kind of million dollar question of is the NHS fit for purpose. I saw your face councillor, I think I probably pulled the same one. I can't answer that either but what I can tell you is the people that work in it still absolutely believe in what we're trying to deliver for our population, 100%. Is it easy? No, it isn't. Has it got harder? Yes, it has. And I think that impacts on every area kind of of healthcare, no matter where you sit in it. It's not an easy gig anymore to be honest. So therefore wellbeing becomes really important. We have a really kind of strong focus on that in the acute, I know the Health and Care Trust do as well. I think all areas of the health service are very mindful of that. Sickness rates are something that we monitor really closely and particularly the sickness rates that link to stress and anxiety. Those are something that we report on at board level and talk about frequently. Lots of programmes in place to try and support staff, to try and help them, to try and signpost them to all the facilities or the kind of care that is available to them. But the reality is you can't take away the fact that when you're working in a system that is stretched as far as the NHS currently is, going home every day feeling that you haven't quite delivered what you really wanted to do for the people that are in front of you is really hard. It's really hard. And so kind of my thanks goes out to every single kind of member of staff that pitches up across the whole patch every day, usually with a smile on their face, to deliver, you know, what they are trying to do even if they don't manage to do it on that occasion. So wellbeing massively important and something we're really focused on across the whole kind of system really. And we've had good support from the ICB, good kind of support as well from Health and Care Trust. Some of our psychological services for example go across both. So that's been a really useful thing to focus on. In terms of immunisation, I think Lisa's absolutely right. I can say we at the acute didn't do as well with immunisation as we, staff immunisation as we'd have liked to have done last year. So we've had a renewed campaign this year which has been very proactive. We've gone with the peer vaccination route which is really, I think, works for us, we've done that previously. Lots of open access drop-in clinics. I think our rates are picking up. I think she says looking, Lisa's nodding at me so I'm going to take that as a good thing. So yeah, I think we're doing pretty well in that space because it is really important and I think we need to focus on that to make sure that our staff are well which keeps our patients well. So yeah, definitely focus and I know the Health and Care Trust are doing the same.
Thank you very much. Did you want to come in Claire?
No, just ready to echo that from the Health and Care Trust perspective Jules, we're having a peer vaccination process as well and it's well underway.
Yeah, I can reassure you that I was asked in every building I went to last week if I wanted a flu jab. And I said, I've already had it, thank you.
That's really good but thank you very much. I think the takeings from this, if the committee is quite happy, we'll be looking and asking you Jade if you come back please in the summer with some of the work we've discussed about almost like a flow chart and that connectivity to make that journey easier for both parties actually, both sides of the fence. And a massive thank you, just to take the opportunity, we recognise the challenges. We see them every day out there and we know as societal challenges we do have. But thank you for your time this morning, for your attendance to our Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, it is very much appreciated, as is the work you do for our communities. Thank you. So back to the committee, she drops her pen. Back to our committee now, we have the work programme. Are the committee members happy with the work programme? Councillor Oodle.
Just three suggestions for you Chair on the work programme and I realise it's already very congested already. And I do so with a bit of trepidation that you'll shout at me for making further suggestions. But the three suggestions which I'd have is, I understand in September this year there were 415 births in Worcestershire which put immense pressure and difficulty among maternity services in the county. Sometimes since we scrutinised maternity services, I wonder whether it should be added to the list. Second point I wish to raise about adding to the work programme is whether we should be scrutinising Healthwatch, especially on the news that it's potentially under threat. So with scrutinisation of Healthwatch, what it does, how it responds, how it works is something which is potentially something worthwhile. And the third one, based on what we've just been hearing and we're discussing, is about employment protection within the service. The impact of abuse and threats and violence against health service workers. I think that's something we should be aware of and the impact it has on employee relationships and retention and whether that's something which we need to investigate further. I recognise we've already got a congested programme and you may have already got the areas covered somewhere on the scheme but it's just the three wish lists from the Worcester branch.
Thank you very much from the Worcester branch, we do appreciate that. We did have this discussed, I believe, following maternity services following the CQC inspection September 2021, May 23 and raised at the 30th of July 2025 Hosk as well. So yeah, I think if board's happy with that, we'll look at maternity. I wasn't aware of that 415 births.
I was a bit shocked.
What is rather...
January was obviously a very good part of the year.
I couldn't possibly pass comment. In terms of Healthwatch, I seem to recollect, Healthwatch come to the Health and Wellbeing Board, don't they, with their programme of work? Dr McNally?
Yes, they do tend to, yeah.
So we've got an opportunity there to go and look at the Healthwatch work via the Health and Wellbeing Board. I'm just thinking, as you so rightly said, we've got a really heavy timetable here of what we want to look at. And I think if we can do that via the chairmanship of Dr Bell, councillor Bell and Dr McNally, that'd be a good move, is that okay?
Especially if the community reports are back.
Absolutely, absolutely. We can get a report back and I'm happy to attend the Health and Wellbeing Board to look at that. What was your third one? Sorry, Dr Bell?
Chair, I just want to update on Healthwatch. So from Department of Health, as we've looked at, you know, they want to slim down and NHSC, health education and lots of things are being phased out. Healthwatch is also one of those in the list, it will be phased out. So we have not heard more details about it but it's in the pipeline. But it still falls under our remit in Health and Wellbeing Board.
That's exactly why I was thinking they need a bit of scrutiny to see whether it does need protection from us. The third item Chair was about employee protection and abuse, threats and attacks.
So in terms of Healthwatch, yes 2027 is the date, we know we've got etched. But I do think it's important we understand the priority areas and the learnings from Healthwatch and keep a close eye on what they're doing and the direction of travel. Because some think or some board needs to step into that space, I believe. Because it's that neutral perspective, isn't it, of what's going on in the health economy. Councillor Bell?
It does come under Health and Wellbeing Board and we do get regular reports from them. But we can share that or bring it over here, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, I think so if you don't mind councillor Bell, or I'll attend the meeting where you've got Healthwatch you're discussing, then I can feed back to the board, which would be really, really positive. Workforce, I think we can put that on the work programme. As we say, it's about prioritisation, it's about what you as a board want to prioritise. But I'm happy to look at that. Our workforce needs protection. We know that the frontline workforce we've got is under, we've just heard a lot of pressure.
It's a issue about retention as well. If you're going to be abused at the workplace, you're not going to want to go to work. And people will search alternative employment. So we need to do, support them in any way we can.
Absolutely. Nobody should ever be abused in their workplace. Thank you councillor Oodle. Councillor McSweeney, have you got something you wish to add please?
Thank you. Yeah, I think I kind of had to pre-order you about this, I was just going to ask about sort of bringing the update on cancer pathway forwards. I mean specifically I was interested in prostate cancer and prostate cancer screening. My apologies, this is something I heard on national radio. I thought, okay, I'm on this, let's bring it up. And there were anecdotes from somebody who lived in Worcester about somebody who had survived and his friend hadn't, which I heard on national radio. So it was prompted me, I appreciate it's been discussed previous, I mean I've looked through the previous minutes and there was specifically things on screening. And I don't know whether this is our place to bring this up. And I thought, okay, let's see, let's explore what we can do. I did have another one as well, I was just prompted by discussion today. I mean I don't see on the programme anywhere. Again, I don't know if it's something we can bring up is, can we discuss IT things as a programme of work? I mean, I'll just say, I mean, I've worked in IT for a long time, so it's kind of, I'm not volunteering to fix the systems but I think, do we discuss that?
So councillor McSweeney, when you speak about IT, are you talking connectivity or from an educational perspective? Because the economy panel will look at IT connectivity and we recognise the fact, well I think we're about 84% for faster broadband, but that last 16% is quite difficult to push out. But we're not saying it doesn't need to happen, it needs to happen. In terms of education, Age UK run a programme of educating older people how to access the internet. So I suppose...
No, I'm talking about IT within the NHS in terms of what has come up in discussion today in terms of connectivity between different things. I mean I appreciate this is probably ultimately a national thing rather than something in our local area but it's, okay, where do we get it discussed?
Yep. Councillor Bacall, Cumar?
Making a point about your cancer pathways councillor McSweeney, this was discussed in October and also in April 2024. They were quite good in their presentation. I think we were quite pleasantly surprised the way they gave explanation about cancer pathways. We had some very probing questions then. But as you quite rightly said, things are changing. Maybe if there is a slot, we can fit it in. Thanks Karen.
Yes, thank you very much Bacall. So absolutely councillor McSweeney, we put that on the list, we'll work through because I think it's going to be down to us to articulate what we're looking for from the questions we ask at that meeting. So absolutely happy, thank you. Councillor Bell, councillor Wild and councillor Price. Carry on please.
Can I just follow up on what...
I think councillor Wells was first, sorry councillor Wild.
Oh, that's very kind of you. Yeah, I can give you a lift. The point Chris was raising about IT, but it goes further into administration and I can see an awful lot of wastage. I mean, you can get a letter from, you get a letter saying they're going to do something. And then you get another letter to say they're about to do it. And there's all these different letters and they never come at the right time. So I'm just thinking, could be a huge amount of wastage and confusion that's caused within the NHS about administration. So that fits in with the IT really.
Right. So I think it's headed up communications, isn't it? NHS communications.
Yeah.
So we'll unpick that and we'll put that on the list. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'll move it, that's it.
Yeah, covers both. Thank you very much. Come to you one moment, I think councillor Wells is next please.
Chair, thank you. I'm craving your indulgence just slightly here. In terms of the work programme at our last meeting, one of the outcomes, positive outcomes, was Lisa McNally did say to us that she would investigate what more could be done to support veterans with poor mental health, particularly during the winter season but more generally. And I wondered if she had an update?
I think that's, are you happy Dr McNally to answer? Yes, Dr McNally?
Yeah, thanks councillor Wells. So we have begun discussions with Stepway and we are in the final stages of agreeing a public health grant with Stepway. Maybe particularly, what's come out of the discussions is maybe with a particular focus on housing and safe accommodation. There are so many priorities for veterans right now but we're looking at that. So I would say certainly in the next couple of weeks they will have that grant agreement in place. And thanks to you for elbowing me in the ribs about it because it needed doing.
Thank you very much indeed. Who else had their hand up please?
Nick.
Councillor Price and then councillor Miller wanted to come in as well.
Thank you Chair. For February's dental access review, can the NHS England's new dental recovery plan also be covered? Give its implications for Worcestershire.
Absolutely Nick, thank you. Councillor Millie, you're not on this board but we're always happy to engage with people that are outside.
Just a couple of observations really Karen. And one observation is, the figures that we've been dealing with today are dealing with figures and I think it's what the NHS is dealing with. How many people in Worcestershire, because they can't get an NHS appointment, go private? And are those, are those consultants where they go private, are they added on to the figures or is it a separate item? That's the one thing which I was thinking about today as people were talking. And secondly, when I mentioned IT, the one part of IT which we forget is the staff within the NHS can spend, you can have a senior nurse spending an awful long time on the phone trying to get a piece of equipment repaired because it's a necessary piece of equipment, on the phone to whomever because a lot of the equipment is rented. This could have been very easily solved some years ago with each individual piece of equipment having its own ID number. So you just send it off, ID number so-and-so's faulty and replacement is bought. And I was laid down on a bed having some treatment for a good two or three hours, some couple of years ago. And the poor nurse was, she was distraught on the phone trying to get a piece of equipment repaired. And you think, what a waste of a professional's time of doing such a menial task.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Bell, did you want to come in?
So I'm just going to answer your first question about how many patients are going private. So there are two ways. You know how NHS deals with their waiting list. One is of course, when we look at the data recently which came out in all papers, that how many hundred thousand people have, you know, decided to go and seek private care, that's a different issue. But from NHS also you can be sent to private via... But from NHS also, you can be sent to private via acute trust. And you know, when your GP will give you an option for choose and book. So that's also the information which is, there is a gap to share that information from clinics, from specialist clinic, from hospitals, from primary care, to give that information out to the patients, that you do have this option available as well. So that because you're not, NHS is overwhelmed, they can't clear the waiting list. There is a money, there is a funding which private sector gets to clear that waiting list over to the private sector. That was my exact question to the acute trust, that that is underused. That still remains underused because waiting time is going up and up in the list for acute trust, but it's not reflecting on to the private sector, which they can make use of. So that is something they can work on. But I don't have the exact number for that, but I do have the number obviously, which was in the papers for people themselves deciding to take private care going overseas and that, that's a completely different issue. But this is for the NHS.
Thank you very much indeed. That brings to a close the Health Overview and Scrutiny meeting this morning. Thank you very much for your attendance and your contributions, very much appreciated. Thank you.